Well, we're not going to call the meeting into order yet.
Recording in progress.
We have one pre gavel item, Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, colleagues. I wanted to just offer a few comments before we move forward, and I want to acknowledge some invited guests that are here with us today. Mary Rita Hurley from Our House, Reverend Cecil Prescott from Ainsworth United Church of Christ, who has the Day Center for People Living with HIV, Ian Morton from the Q Center, and Tyler Tamir from Cascade AIDS Project. In a moment, we're going to ask for all of you to make a few comments and really lift up the amazing work that you do every day for people who live with HIV. And Mayor and colleagues, I just am really grateful to be here, literally today, as someone who's lived with HIV since the early 80s. It's truly an honor to be a member of the Portland City Council and to take that lived experience with me in my lens as I serve with all of you. And it's very special there for, for me personally, to make sure that we just take a moment to honor World AIDS Day. I will go ahead and start by having our guests that are online. I don't know if I see all of them. Mary Rita Hurley, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Great, great. It's good to hear your voice. And we'd just like you to just have some brief comments to get us centered on this topic today. And thank you for all the work you do in the community.
You want me to start, you say?
Yeah, just share some comments.
Okay. Hi. Well, thanks. I don't know why I can't figure out the camera today, but here we are. I'm Mary Rita Hurley. I'm the Executive Director of Our House of Portland. And for us today, particularly, World AIDS Day has been being celebrated since 1986. It's been a very long time that we've been fighting this battle. And this year's theme is around inequalities and ending inequalities and ending AIDS. And while we've come a very long way with the disease, we still have a long way to go. There's still a lot of stigma around HIV and the ability for people to fully live their life with dignity. Here at Our House, we've been working with people living with HIV for over 33 years in our residential care facility, as well as inpatient or outpatient and within our food pantry and small goods store. And we've seen the disease change quite a bit. We started basically as a hospice. And now we do see people leave here and go out and continue to live their lives. We've also recognized that people are living longer with HIV. So the long-term survivors have had a lot of trauma in their life and continue from the disease. They've lost a whole generation of people back in the 80s and 90s. So I guess what I would say is we're hopeful. Things are hopefully moving in a much more positive direction. And we still have a lot of work that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary. Appreciate your words. Reverend Cecil Prescott, are you on the line? There you are. I see you. I see you, Cecil. And let me see you unmute and you're on the camera. Welcome. And you're Reverend in the Day Center at Ainsworth United Church of Christ. I just have to say a little something before you speak. And that is when I first moved here in 96, I remember hearing you and Pastor Lynn on KBOO. And that's what got me to attend Ainsworth United Church of Christ just a few days later. So anyways, it's a real honor to have you here, Reverend Prescott.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, City Council members. As we've heard, World AIDS Day has been celebrated since the 1980s. And it developed out of a need to recognize and raise awareness around AIDS pandemic. Communities in every part of the world have been devastated by the continual continuing effect of HIV/AIDS on their families and friends. Too many of us have lost loved ones, people who have died. And this continuing struggle to provide adequate medical care for those living with HIV is a reality for so many. As we've heard of the great work of Our House and other organizations in our communities, people are reaching out and have reached out for many, many years. It may be hard to remember these days when HIV/AIDS was viewed as a scarlet letter of shame by society. The federal government ignored it. And although AIDS was first identified in 1981, President Reagan did not mention it publicly until 1985. Religious institutions condemned those who were infected with HIV virus. However, as I mentioned, from the early days of the epidemic, people and community have created caring networks that thrive on the commitment, hard work, and love of ordinary people. My faith tradition, the United Church of Christ, first spoke out for compassionate care for those living with HIV in the early 1980s. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Ryan, HIV has partnered with the Medical Ministry of Oregon to host the HIV Day Center. Now, the HIV Day Center opened in Portland in 1990, and it was the first freestanding community-based program of its kind in the United States. It was created by a coalition of healthcare workers, healthcare providers. Again, another manifestation how ordinary committed people can have an impact on their community and impact for the good. And for 20 years, Ainsworth has hosted the HIV Center. It is a community center, I like to say mostly. It's a community center for low-income people living with HIV/AIDS. Provides hot breakfasts and lunches five days a week. Staff are available for counseling, information, and referral, and to help with problem solving. Day Center clients, community members have access to phones, a mail drop, computer with internet access, washer dryer, clothing, a shower, and hygiene supplies. The Day Center provides therapeutic and recreational activities and volunteer practitioners or for acupuncture, foot cares, massage, and haircuts. For many, HIV continues to be a living reality. And when we are faced with so many healthcare emergency and different epidemics and pandemics, such as the one we are living in, I am reminded of the compassionate care of ordinary people who created institutions such as the HIV Day Center to remind us that we are all a community and that each one of us has a responsibility to help others in our community. And when we come together as a community, we can do great things. And so on this World AIDS Day, I remember and lift up those who continue to work for and to remember those who are living with HIV/AIDS and to work for a day when we will see HIV/AIDS as a memory. Thank you so much, and thank you for your commitment.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cecil Prescott. And next, we have Ian Morton from Q Center.
Hello. First of all, full transparency, Q Center is not yet doing enough for the HIV community. And some of you know why. We're in a rebuilding process, but I'm looking forward to partnering more robustly with many of the folks on here who are doing great work and find out how we can better support that work. World AIDS Day is complicated for me because I'm not a person living with HIV. But coming out in 1994, that was the boogeyman in every gay man's closet, was the fear of HIV and AIDS. And I'm appreciative to see the work that's being done at churches. Thank you, Reverend Prescott. Because from my mother's pulpit, she was taught in 1994 that two gay men having sex will manifest AIDS. And the phone call that I had to her where I came out, the very last thing she said before she hung up the phone is, "When you're dying of AIDS, don't call me." And I say that because the disease has been weaponized for so many years, and it has impacted the way we have manifested our own lives. I moved to San Diego and started working in an HIV specialty pharmacy in 1997. And the first guy that I caught feelings for happened to be one of our clients. And I called him this morning because we went on one date, and he assumed, because I agreed to go out with him, that I was HIV-positive as well. And he could not continue a relationship with me because he was so afraid of infecting me. And I always remember that, how many individuals we've lost, how many relationships might not have been able to prosper because of people sero-sorting, or as I call it, serodiscriminating. And I just want us to remember that. And just as recently as July of 2021, a hip-hop artist felt that it was all right from a stage to weaponize HIV and AIDS against the community. So there's still so much further to go. But I'd also love to lift up the women, and especially our lesbian sisters, who held gay men, those who were dying, close and supported them. So many of the amazing nurses I've met through my career have been lesbians who've worked in the HIV sector and who've seen so much death but still maintain their support. And I specifically want to call out something archivally historical from San Diego, which is where I did most of my HIV advocacy, the Blood Sisters. For those of you who haven't heard of them, they were a group of lesbians that came together to do blood drives for gay men living with HIV. Because those men were not prioritized when it came to getting blood transfusions. Gay men could not donate blood for them. So all of these women came together to do blood drives to keep so many of these folks alive. So for all of the women in our community, whether they be lesbian women, transgender women, allies who have uplifted the HIV community, I want to remember them and celebrate them today.
Thank you so much, Ian. And now, welcome into the room Tyler Tamir from Cascade AIDS Project. Welcome, Tyler.
Commissioner, good morning, everyone. My name is Dr. Tyler Tamir, and I, as was mentioned, proudly serve as the Chief Executive Officer of Cascade AIDS Project and PRISM Health. Now, today, we are gathered here to pause and honor World AIDS Day. Observed annually on December 1st, this day is dedicated to people across the world uniting in their response to HIV. That includes people with and at risk for HIV, our long-term survivors, and allows us to reflect on those who have died from AIDS-related illness over the last 40 years. Despite the progress we have made over the last four decades, HIV is still a very serious public health challenge. And as this year's World AIDS Day theme, "Ending the HIV Epidemic: Equitable Access, Everyone's Voice", reminds us, there is still work ahead to achieve equitable access to HIV prevention, care, and treatment in every community. Today, the White House released an updated national strategy with a goal of ending the US epidemic by 2030. This national HIV/AIDS strategy serves as a roadmap with bold targets for ending the HIV epidemic in the United States and reflects CAP's priorities to put equity at the center of the response and include a robust, community-centered, and whole-of-society approach. Now, as a Black queer man who has been living with HIV for nearly 18 years myself, today also stands as a stark reminder that there is still so much work to do within our community. It is a reminder that we have an accountability to ourselves and to each other for knowing our status in order to take better care of one another and ourselves. In this country, the Black community is one of the most impacted by the HIV epidemic. There is, of course, no single factor that has led to us being one of those groups, but instead, it is a multifaceted set of issues involving social, cultural, and economic forces interacting in a variety of ways. I often wonder why this is still happening when there have been so many medical advancements, and there are so many prevention methods and tools in place. But the answer here can be quite simple: opportunity. Some of us have simply not been afforded the opportunity to access preventative methods. Some of us continue to have our rights to make choices for our own bodies and reproductive rights challenged. Some of us are incarcerated and fighting for our freedom. Some of us are just simply forgotten. Right here in Oregon, statistically speaking, the entire Black community is at higher risk of contracting HIV. Black people represent 12% of the US population, but account for 50% of HIV diagnosis. And in Oregon, Black men are four times more likely than white men to be diagnosed with HIV. We must become more inclusive in our messages and strategies. That inclusivity should look like all of us fighting together. What this day means to me is that I still have more work to do until the rest of my community realizes the value of our entire community. It means in everyone in our community, we must work together to continue to fight for equitable resources and equal access. And it means that organizations like CAP and Our House and Q Center and communities of faith need to support leadership within our community that have traditionally been furthest from access and opportunity. It means we won't stop until our next generation is liberated from this epidemic. So I just want to thank the Commission for holding this space today and for your ongoing commitment to partnering with community to make Portland a more vibrant and healthier space. Thank my colleagues for their impactful words this morning. We continue to live in challenging times, and the resilience of the HIV community knows better than anyone how to survive a plague. In love and light of all those that I personally lost along the way, we think of you on this World AIDS Day.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tamir, and for all of our invited guests. I hope that you can hang on with us for a little bit longer. What I'd like to do now is open up the floor to my colleagues before I make some personal comments and then hand it over to the mayor for the proclamation. So colleagues, the floor is yours.
Commissioner Maps, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, colleagues. I'd like to thank Commissioner Ryan for bringing this item forward, and I'd like to thank our speakers for their comments and amazing community work. And I would also like to say I am proud to join you in declaring December 1st, 2021, to be World AIDS Day here in Portland. Since 1986, communities across the globe have recognized December 1st of each year to be World AIDS Day. The purpose of this day is to raise awareness of the AIDS epidemic, provide support to those living with HIV. And on this day, we remember those who we have lost too soon. And we celebrate the progress that we have made in battling HIV and AIDS. And on World AIDS Day, we recommit ourselves to finding a cure. Now, since the 1980s, about 40 million people have died of HIV. Today, across the globe, about the same number of people are HIV-positive. About 1.2 million of those people live in the United States, and about 9,000 of those folks live here in Oregon. And of course, it's always important to remember that HIV/AIDS does not discriminate. Americans of all genders, ages, ethnicities, incomes, and sexual orientations are HIV-positive. However, some communities are more at risk than others. Across the globe, poor, disadvantaged, and disenfranchised communities are at higher risk of being exposed to HIV than more affluent communities. And that pattern also holds here in the United States. Here in America, gay and bisexual men, transgender people, young people, African-Americans, Latino-Americans, and people who inject drugs are at a disproportionate risk. While HIV remains a leading cause of death worldwide, the death rate is slowly declining due to improved treatments and improved access to medical care. On a global basis, annual deaths due to HIV/AIDS peaked in the year 2005, when nearly 2 million humans succumbed to the virus. This year, fewer than 1 million people are expected to die from HIV-related complications. Now, that's incredible progress. But our struggle against HIV/AIDS is far from over. And that's why on World AIDS Day, we recommit ourselves, building on the progress we've made against this dreaded disease. On World AIDS Day, we remember to support Portlanders living with HIV/AIDS. We recommit to expanding access to HIV-related healthcare services. On World AIDS Day, we commit ourselves to fighting the stigma associated with HIV status, and we pledge to protect the rights of those living with HIV and AIDS. And on World AIDS Day, we double down on our goal of ending this pandemic once and for all. Colleagues, for those reasons and more, I urge Portlanders to join this council in recognizing December 1st, 2021, to be World AIDS Day here in Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps, Commissioner Rubio, then Commissioner Hirst.
Thank you to Commissioner Ryan for bringing this proclamation to council and for your advocacy. And thank you, Mary Rita, and Reverend Prescott, Ian, and Tyler for sharing all of your important words today. And thank you to all the incredible organizations that you all represent, Cascade AIDS Project, Our House, Q Center, for all your tremendous work in our community and for providing essential HIV services and advocacy with a community-centered approach. I can't begin to imagine the trauma and the hardship of prejudice and bias that this community has experienced, those living with HIV, and especially in its early days, and the courage and resiliency required of these brave individuals during that time. And I include, now, this includes my admiration for our own colleague and friend, Commissioner Dan Ryan, as well. We honor the significance of all of these lives and these stories today. And I'm so grateful that we live in a time where treatments are available now for those living with HIV, but we still have a lot of work to do to continue to raise awareness, educate ourselves and our fellow community members about the complete story of the HIV epidemic and the harmful stigmas that still exist. And above all, I just want to honor the courage and resiliency of all those living and who've lived with and been affected by HIV and lift up their stories of resilience and hope and contribution. Because we would be a different world without those contributions and those stories. So thank you so much again to all the presenters and to Commissioner Ryan for sharing so honestly and bravely your story with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirst.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. I have to say, the sense of courage that it takes to live with HIV publicly and honestly and authentically is really impressive. What I know is, as someone who, my very first job at the county, was setting up the Ryan White Title I Commission, I was embraced by people living with HIV, and they educated me on how their voices needed to be centered and figuring out how to provide supports for people in Mottlemick County who were experiencing HIV and AIDS. When I hear stories about from the pulpit, being told that your life does not matter, I know today from the pulpit, people are still saying that. If we've learned nothing through the most recent pandemic is that those with the least access are the ones that are hit hardest and take the longest to recover. Commissioner Ryan lives a very brave and courageous life, as do many of us. As do many of the speakers who spoke today, who are living bravely and honestly with HIV. I honor that. I want to lift that up today in honor of World AIDS Day. And I also want to acknowledge, like every other health inequity, if you're black, it is exacerbated. And HIV/AIDS is no different. It is important as a council that proclamations are good and fine. And they uplift issues in our community. But I feel that we need to spend more than one day a year talking about how people in our community are living with HIV and AIDS. And if they are in fact getting the help and the supports that they need. Again, thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Thank you to all the speakers. And Reverend Cecil Prescott, you and I go back way too many years for me to honestly, otherwise people wouldn't know just how old I am. I just want to say you have always been a religious leader that has led with compassion and empathy. And I just wanted to take a moment to honor you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst, Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, colleagues. This is a wonderful way to set a tone for a city council meeting. I really appreciate us taking some time. And the invited guest really did set the right tone for us. I'm just going to tell a few personal stories. In 1982, I was at Rutgers College and the, I almost said alignment week, the Village Voice had a big article about HIV. And someone on my dorm floor knew I was gay, even though I wasn't out. Imagine that. And they wanted to go over the article with me. And and then about three months later, in December, I got the worst flu of my entire life and a big rash broke out. The doctors didn't know what was going on. I only tell you this because later on, it was discovered that was probably when it happened, the transition. And then in 1986, after really adhering to all the great practices that we were told to follow, I fell in love and my partner and I at the time were about ready to move to New York and build our life together. Both did the test. That's when the test came out. And Patrick's was negative and mine was positive. And the beautiful part of the story is we both moved to New York. I had to change plans. I was moving to New York to be an actor. And I was told by the doctor the day in July in Portland, here's how it was handled back then, over the telephone, the doctor said, well, I have bad news for you. You have HIV. And you'll probably be good for about five years, but not doesn't look good much after that. So just make sure you have great health insurance and also make sure you keep it quiet because there's a lot of stigma and prejudice out there. So it wasn't the easiest liftoff to move to New York City. And I pivoted and decided I needed a job with with health insurance. So I ended up in a development office in New School and Parsons School of Design. And I began the life of someone that's living with HIV at that time. Where you I had to fire one doctor because they wanted to put me on some drugs that I just didn't think were good based on my information. You know, I was in support groups with a lot of other HIV people to stay positive, literally, in our spirit. It just really changed my life. And then when I fast forward, I was in Seattle and doing work in the HIV field. I worked at Bailey Boucher House, which is was built expressly for people living with HIV. I was their first development director. And three years into that job in 96, I got really bad pneumonia, which was, it's called pneumocystis. And like the crazy person I am, I went back to work way too soon and got a relapse and that was much worse. And then I was told I would have about six months to a year to live. So I made plans and I moved back home. That's Portland. So I actually came to Portland to have a comfortable end of life experience. It's just been going on now for about 25 years and it's, I have, the drugs came out. Next thing you know, I, at that time, I was suddenly started feeling better and was told by the same doctor to make plans that it looks like you need to go back to work. Like you're going to live longer. Like, okay, I'll, I'll take this pivot. And, and so it's just been a real privilege to have access to good healthcare, to have the skill sets to know how to manage a system, to know how to, you know, fire a doctor when they're not the right one and get another one. So I'm really aware of my privilege and I've lived with HIV for 40 years, much because I've accessed that. And I never forget that as I want to always join partnership to make sure that we always have an equity lens on this and that we continue to provide excellent healthcare for all. So it does really shape my lens when it comes to public health because I've lived it. I've also lived the private and public shame. And it was really helpful to listen to what you had to say, dating when I was single for many years as an HIV person is fascinating. And it's always like, when do you disclose? And is this the person that's going to shame you and not want to go out with you again? Or is this the person that only likes you because, I mean, it's just, it adds so many dimensions. I can't even tell you. So I'm just also grateful to be with someone who happens to be negative that, you know, is well-educated and we know how to manage our lives together as a couple. So on this day, I'm just really grateful, literally, to be alive, to serve with this type of experience, lived experience and the wisdom that it brings you. You know, definitely living with HIV for 40 years means that I've lived much longer with it than without it. And mostly, I don't want to end with thinking about the many brothers and sisters I've lost over the last 40 years. I went to so many funerals at such a young age and I think about them frequently. And I really do live and serve with all of those beautiful souls in my heart every day. And I will end by saying that it's really a gift to serve with all of you. And the compassion that you bring to this topic really fills my heart. And with that, Mayor, I turn it over to you for the proclamation. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Brian. We appreciate it. Appreciate you. Before I read the proclamation, obviously, I want to thank you, Commissioner, and your staff for bringing this forward. And regarding your staff, I want to particularly acknowledge Darian Jones for taking the lead in drafting this proclamation. I also want to thank you, the United Church of Christ, Cascade AIDS Project, and the Q Center for their contributions to drafting this proclamation. With that, I will read the proclamation on behalf of the Portland City Council. Whereas 40 years ago, the first documented cases of AIDS brought about an era of uncertainty, fear, and discrimination. And whereas far too many people living with HIV or AIDS have faced prejudice or bias. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and two-spirited communities, specifically men who've had sex with men, have been most targeted and affected by HIV or AIDS discrimination. And whereas World AIDS Day was first observed in 1988 focused the world's attention on ending the HIV epidemic, reducing stigma around HIV and AIDS, and increasing awareness and knowledge about the transmission and treatment. And whereas public outreach and education about HIV and AIDS, such as wearing red, continues to be a vital tool to bring more awareness about the ongoing global epidemic. And whereas the decades since those first cases with ingenuity, leadership, research, and historic investments in evidence-based practices, we've begun to move towards an era of resilience and hope. And whereas the Portland metro area is home to more than 3,500 residents who currently live with HIV or AIDS. And whereas, community-based programs led by organizations like Our House of Portland, Ecomedical Ministries of Oregon, Q Center, and Ainsworth United Church of Christ have provided resources and support to reduce barriers for people living with HIV and AIDS. And whereas Cascade AIDS Project, the oldest and largest community-based provider of HIV services, housing, education, and advocacy in Oregon and Southwest Washington, was founded in Portland. And whereas, because of antiretroviral treatments, people living with HIV who start these therapies earlier in the course of their infection can now expect a near normal lifespan. And whereas, the city of Portland recognizes and honors the networks and individuals living with and affected by HIV and the advocates who continue to fight the HIV/AIDS epidemic. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim December 1st of 2021 to be World AIDS Day and encourage all residents to observe this day and show their support for people affected by HIV or AIDS by wearing red. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And with that, colleagues, I will call the meeting to order. This is the Wednesday, December 1st, 2021 morning session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good morning. Can you please call the roll?
Morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Hurst.
Present.
Wheeler.
Here. Under Portland city code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference. And the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, eGovPDX, wwwportlandoregon.gov/video and Channel 30. Public may provide written testimony to council by emailing the council clerk, cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we continue to manage through these challenging circumstances to conduct the city's business. With that, we'll hear from legal counsel and rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you're representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. First up is communications. First individual, please, Kealan, item 827.
Request of Steve Hunt to address council regarding homeless camps on their street.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Steve Hunt. I want to thank Mr. Mayor and the city council members for giving me this time. I reside in the Midway area of East County. And I know that, Mr. Mayor, we don't always see eye to eye on everything and that's fine. I mean, I think that's normal. But I want to thank you for being willing to take the tough job and to listen to what I have to say this morning. We have a homeless camp on our sidewalk for almost three months. This camp blocks the only sidewalk on a busy street. They empty their cars and garbage lining the street, the sidewalk and flower beds. Cars arrive at all hours, double parking, blocking the two-way traffic flow on the street. They speed away at all hours. They're disturbing the peace of our neighborhood. There's drugs, indecent exposure. I've seen this stuff. My neighbors have talked to me about it. There's been the theft of mail. We actually talked to a postal clerk who came and retrieved it. There's been several occasions, fire trucks have come because they burned, they lit some bushes on fire and some trees got lit also. There's two bus stops for kids on the street and the parents don't even drop their kid. They, they don't even pick them up from what I just saw one this morning. They just don't pick any kids up. I think the parents are taking the kids to school by car. And the children won't, they don't even walk to the bus stop and they avoid it completely if they, if their parents aren't taking them. So what I want to ask you, Mr. Mayor, is, is, you know, I think we all agree that we have a fundamental right to live safely where we do reside and enjoy where we reside. I know that you want that for the city and yourself, and you want to provide that for me and my family. I need to hear from you, Mr. Mayor. What can I do in my neighborhood? And I need to hear from you, sir. What are you working on for my neighborhood that not only that not, that only you can do in your leadership position?
Be happy to respond. First of all, thank you very much for being here today and thank you for, for your patience this morning. There's multiple things that we're trying to do. First of all, I stated clearly that my goal is to remove as many people as quickly and humanly as possible from our sidewalks, our public right-of-ways, parklands, pretty much any area. And to that end, I have significantly increased investments in emergency responses to get people off the street. Our recent fall budget included funding for additional shelter space to get people off the sidewalks. We invested in navigation teams that would go into the neighborhoods and actually build a relationship with people who are on the sidewalks to get them to either seek treatment or give them access to navigation, to housing, or other services they might need to get off the streets. We significantly increased the funding for camper mediation, everything from litter clean up to removing the most problematic camps. So we're, we're doing a it's a broad approach. I get asked all the time, why don't we just make it illegal and enforce the law? And the answer is, the problem is so large that to simply make it illegal and assume that the police would go out and do what? Tell people to move and they'd move across the street. So the bottom line is, we have to find humane alternatives quickly to get people off the streets. That's my personal view. This does not fall squarely on my shoulders alone. My colleagues may have different perspectives. They all have a role to play in this, as do other levels of government. And I have, in the last two days, advocated for additional support, both from our federal office holders as well as our state office holders, to acknowledge the scope of the problem as you have and understand that while we have our obligation here at the local level and I have my responsibilities, Mayor, we're going to need a lot of help in terms of shelter, housing, support services, mental health, substance abuse, domestic violence, survivorship services, youth services. All of these things need to come to bear and they need to be coordinated in a way to get as many people off the streets as quickly and humanly as possible. I do have a question. I want to make sure, have you, Steve, called in? Have you called our impact reduction team to see if they could come out and take a look at the camp that you referenced?
Now, impact reduction team? Is that what it's called?
Yes, sir.
Now, I have called not, you know, I've called 311. I've filled out a lot of reports. I've emailed ReportPDX. I've given photos, information. I've talked to John Wheeler, Michael Cribbs repeatedly.
All right. It sounds like you've done your part. So let me do this. I assume your contact information is on the sheet that you signed up on to testify today. I'll have somebody from my staff reach out to you specifically.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be wonderful. I, I know you guys, I know you guys got a tough job and, you know, there's no question in my mind that. And I know that you want to do the best thing for this city. I've lived here my entire life. And, and, you know, I love this place. I'm a pastor in here. I've helped people out across, we've helped people. But these people here at this camp, they're, I'll just be honest with you, they're belligerent. And, and they threaten us. And, you know, we've, I've helped, like I said, we've helped people get, get their cars fixed. get their cars fixed and things like that, because, you know, I mean, I have compassion, but I remember, Mr. Mayor, you saying on the news, I think it was, there's a line between compassion and enabling. And, and we are, you know, we care about our community, and, I mean, I pastor in this community. And we really, we want to help, but these people, I mean, it's, it's a whole different ball of wax. I mean, they're just, like I said, they, they basically tell us, well, we don't have to move until the city tells us, right? Well, that's not going to work.
There's more of a community response that's needed here, and I do appreciate your, your, your being here today. And Steve, I'll have a member of my team reach out to you directly.
I appreciate it so much. Thank you. Thank you, council members.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Thanks. Kealan, next individual, item eight two eight.
Request of Sarah Hannigan to address council regarding prohibition on the sale of force-fed foie gras, a luxury food item of negative animal welfare, environmental, and public health implications.
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Sarah Hannigan, and I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak this morning. I live in the Lentz neighborhood in southeast Portland. And as was just stated, the topic I'd like to discuss with you all this morning, both in my personal capacity and in my professional capacity as a campaigner for the animal protection nonprofit Animal Equality. May be familiar to some of you, maybe not all of you. It's the topic of force-feeding animals for the creation of luxury food products. And for any of you who aren't familiar with what foie gras is, it's a high-end food item made from the diseased enlarged liver of a duck or a goose. It is sold in roughly 10 different establishments here in Portland. And the legislative solution we're asking the council to take to address these problems is one that's been taken elsewhere, and that is a ban on the sale of foie gras from force-fed birds. Like I said, other jurisdictions have already successfully implemented such bans, and I strongly hope to see Portland added to that list. So foie gras, which is French for fatty liver, is produced by inserting a foot-long metal or plastic tube down the esophagus of a duck or a goose, and rapidly delivering huge amounts of concentrated grain, fat, and compressed air into the bird via a pneumatic or hydraulic pump. Apologies for that graphic description, but I think it's important that people kind of understand the process, which is repeated up to three times a day for several weeks until the animal's liver becomes diseased. So they're intentionally diseasing these animals and enlarging their liver up to 10 times its normal size, again, for the creation of a luxury food product. This is the most common method of production, and veterinary professionals have attested it causes the birds extreme pain and suffering. This production method causes significant environmental harms as well, most notably continuous water pollution, which the EPA has documented. And there's more. Within the factory farming industry, foie gras production actually presents the greatest risk of zoonotic disease outbreaks because of the constant abuse they endure. These animals actually have weakened immune systems, making them especially susceptible to bird flu, which can spread to humans, and these days, we should be taking any zoonotic disease risk really seriously. So for all these reasons, the sale of force-fed foie gras has already been banned, most recently in the entire city of New York, but also the state of California, and nearly a dozen countries. To date, 55, I think more than 55 now, Portland businesses have signed on to a statement of support for a ban on the sale of force-fed foie gras in our city. These are mostly food service sector businesses. So I am happy to answer any questions you might have now. I'll also follow up via email, and we have a website with a ton of information on it. It's just pdxfoiegras.com.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for listening.
Kealan, next individual in Communications, please. Item eight two nine.
Request of Charlene Penny to address council regarding lack of safety and livability in southeast Portland.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here speaking instead of Charlene Penny. My name is Sharon Solniki, and I have lived in the Lentz area for over 26 years and have been an active participant engaged in community. Johnson Creek runs through my backyard. Twenty-six years ago, the Brookside Wetlands was constructed to mitigate the Johnson Creek flooding, and many years later, with much planning thought and tax dollars, the Johnson Creek Restoration Area went in. The latter made a huge difference in ameliorating flooding events, and it had been an enticing destination to walk to. That has long ended. For safety and aesthetics, I wouldn't dream of doing that today. The uptick in homelessness, the encampments that has brought with it a degradation of the riparian areas, creekside, and pollution of the creek. Since I haven't walked in, I cannot report on the destruction within the green spaces. Trees are cut for firewood. Garbage and assorted debris accumulate on the streets. RVs in various states of decline litter Foster Road east and west of southeast 110th Drive, and they're ever-growing. The ultimate desecration has been the tearing down of fencing and driving vehicles into these sensitive areas. I wonder about the health and safety of homeless people using the creek as their primary water source, since the state has listed several chemicals and bacteria as present in the creek water. Mitigation of flooding and salmon return were the primary movers to establish both wetlands. These areas had blossomed with this profound degradation. I wonder who speaks up for the creek, the riparian area, and all manner of wildlife that rely on the area for their well-being. I urge you to find suitable placements for these homeless and stop the destruction. I'm asking every one of you to come out, if you dare, and see the destruction firsthand. Better yet, send a drone overhead so you can get a fuller picture. It is interesting to note that since the recent proclamation about the sensitive green spaces, biohazard teams have been out to do a major cleanup, but I'm not sure, outside of cleaning the perimeters, if they actually went into the inner aspects of these green spaces. We need constant monitoring of the creek's water quality, especially in the summer, and much, much better oversight of these precious green spaces. Stop the destruction. We need our green spaces intact. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next up, next individual, item eight three zero.
Request of Joseph V. Burke. Request of Joseph V. Burke to address council regarding the homeless situation.
Good morning.
Morning. You know, I feel like Portland has created a situation where it's become a, if you will, Mecca for the homeless. I think that we're attracting them from other places that do, in fact, enforce their, you know, you can't camp in public spaces. And so therefore, the homeless population here is clearly not all homegrown. We're clearly inviting people from other places. I mean, I see the dilapidated RVs with Washington plates and whatnot. Like, we're, like, are we willing to recognize that we have created a situation by our policies of not enforcing the laws on the books that is not only attracting homeless, who I do have compassion for, but the criminal element that goes along with it? I mean, I, you know, I moved to this city 19 years ago. I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan. I have seen, in my own lifetime, a city go into a death spiral of, and I just, I feel like Portland is in that place now. And I'm just wondering, like, you know, I know, like, Mayor Wheeler wanted to hire 300 or more police officers, and that's great, but if, it doesn't really do any good if, like, they just go in and then just walk right back out with no, you know, I'm just really getting exasperated, and I want to know, what is the overarching plan to deal with this?
Does that complete your comments?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardesty, you got a comment or a question? Commissioner, you're muted still.
Thank you. Yeah, who knew I would do that again after a couple of years of being on Zoom? I want to thank the people who spoke today about the issues of houselessness. And I want to take a moment to separate the fact that on March, what, 12th of 2020, when the governor declared a state of emergency and required people to stay home, thousands of people lost their jobs, there are two in three minimum wage jobs, and found themselves faced with houselessness. And I actually, every, when I leave my house, I am walking by camps all the time. I'm talking to people who are camping. Many of the people who are camping are still working minimum wage jobs. They just can't afford first-last security deposit, pet deposit, and pet rent to live in a very expensive city. And so I just want to remind people, most people are not on the street because they want to be. Most people are but for grace. There go I. I was fortunate to be able to order in food and supplies, and I was fortunate to have a living wage job. But there's so many Portlanders on our streets today that prior to March 2020, they weren't doing great, but they were getting by. And are there people involved in criminal behavior? No question. Are there people who are on the street who clearly need mental health support? No question. But I just wanted to remind folks that, for many people, they were economically devastated on March 12th, 2020, and those were people who were working in our restaurants, and they were cleaning our businesses. And the reality is, small businesses in Portland and individuals who are economically devastated are still economically devastated. And it's going to take a while to, for people to get back on their feet. Those with the least resources were impacted most, and those with the most resources, many of them are doing really fine, and they want to just make everything on the street disappear. You can ignore people suffering for two years, and then all of a sudden want it to disappear. So, you know, I just felt I had to say something on behalf of the hard-working people who are living in their cars, who are living in broken-down RVs, and who are trying to survive in a really challenging economic environment. And I feel for housed and unhoused alike. We should all feel safe in our community regardless of our housing status. So, thank you.
I'd like to respond generally to. So there are many people working on this issue. And I want to express that I hear and I understand the frustration people have expressed today. I hear it morning, noon, and night. And the problem is very real, and the problem is very serious, and people are understandably very frustrated by it. So I, first of all, just want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge that this council is acting with urgency to bring attention to the emergency nature of this crisis. There, longer term, frankly, has been a focus on housing. And while that focus continues to exist, there have been significant movements in recent months, in recent years, to focus on the emergency humanitarian crisis that's before us now in terms of the number of people on the street. I think all of us agree that we would like fewer homeless camps on our street. Ultimately, we'd like there to be services for people who need, you know, job training, people who need substance abuse or mental health services, domestic violence survivorship services. I think we all acknowledge that need, and we're working with the governments that are responsible for those safety nets, which, by the way, is not the city of Portland, but we are still providing leadership to those questions, the answers to those questions around how those services can be provided. We have led as a community with two affordable housing bonds, one at the local level, one at the regional level. This community, again, voted a little over two years ago now to support a homeless services measure to help get people off the streets. And every budget that I have presided over since I took office as mayor has seen a substantial increase in commitment towards addressing the crisis on the streets prior, you know, relative to any prior investments that were made before I took office as mayor. I also want to acknowledge the problem has gotten much worse, as Commissioner Hardesty just indicated for a variety of reasons. You asked a good question, one that people ask a lot, which is, are we enabling? Are we inviting people? Are we encouraging people to come from elsewhere? The data shows that, to some degree, that's true. The problem would still be significant just with the local population, but yeah. Until very recently, there was not any government-sponsored 24/7 adult shelter anywhere in the metro region outside of the city of Portland and Moonee County. And so, yes, we were taking a disproportionate burden for people who were unhoused living on the streets. But we're starting to see more of an equalization. We're seeing more services being brought into other areas of the metro region. The bottom line is, we do want to address this quickly. We are making the investments. We are doing what we think we need to do to help ameliorate the problem, and we're trying to be compassionate and understanding for those who are on the streets through no fault of their own. So that's, that is the plan writ large in two minutes or less. And I thank all of you for testifying this morning on what's obviously the greatest social issue facing this city today and probably in the entire history of the city. I think we have one more individual. Kealan, if I'm not mistaken, item eight three one. It looks like Aubrey.
Request of Aubrey Russell to address council regarding funding for Monument's public engagement process.
Good morning.
Yo, I'm Nate Aubrey. Still on mute.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Aubrey Russell. I want to address the $50,000 you approved for Monument review process. It seems these funds are to hire an outside consultant. It seems that consultant will design and direct a public engagement process. It seems that data from this process would be directed to you, City Council, so that you can decide the issue of monuments. This is all good news. Having said that, there are a few details coming from Commissioner Rubio's office. Having money is good. Having a plan and communicating that plan to the public, transparency is going to be even better. My fear, as I've said before, is that process might be compromised by inclusion of RAC or Portland Parks and Recreation. I've explained before that RAC is a private entity and so not transparent. RAC is biased because it's already decided this issue twice. RAC, in the way that it has attempted to design a process to date, has demonstrated that it's not competent. And RAC, by misrepresenting what was said in the South Park Blocks Plan and misrepresenting
and misrepresenting what you, City Council, have said about that, about monuments, has demonstrated that RAC is not honest. So, to recap, RAC is biased, non-transparent, not competent, and not honest. When I spoke with Portland Parks and Recreation Director Adina Long a couple of weeks ago, she made clear that she had very little to say to me, but she did say, quote, "RAC is doing an excellent job." Parks has been an excellent partner to RAC. Director Long did not share with her board the non-starter July two thousand twenty memo on monument removal. Instead, Parks staff removed from the South Park Blocks Plan the recommendation that all are remain. They inserted instead an obscure reference to a potential future partnership with RAC. That partnership was not understood by the Parks Board. The Parks Board did not intend for that to be an endorsement of the idea of monument removal. Yet, when you, City Council, approved that South Park Blocks Plan, RAC has used that as evidence of your endorsement of the idea of monument removal. Parks staff has not objected to this misrepresentation or clarified. As I've said, instead, Director Long tells me that, quote, "RAC is doing an excellent job." So, while money for an outside consultant is good, Commissioner Rubio has revealed a few details. In my view, if an entity is to act in its public role as part of this process, it should not have a history of advocating for a particular perspective. Justice is usually depicted wearing a blindfold and holding a scales. There should not be any thumbs on those scales. I see that I am out of time. Thank you for, thank you for your attention once again.
Thank you, Aubrey. We appreciate your follow-up on this as well. Thanks for being here.
All right, thank you.
Kealan, have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda?
Two items have been pulled. Item eight, three, eight, and item eight, four, five.
Eight, three, eight, and eight, four, five?
Eight, four, five, yes.
Okay, very good. And we will take those two up at the end of the regular agenda, time permitting. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
The consent agenda is adopted first time. Certain item, item eight, three, two, please.
Accept report on My People's Market.
Colleagues, the economic health and prosperity of our city is one of the key focal points of my administration. And I know it serves as one of the most important issues that we're collectively addressing as the City Council. Launched in November of two thousand seventeen, My People's Market grew from a desire to create pathways for entrepreneurs of color to connect with the travel industry as well as new market opportunities. The event was a collaborative venture between Travel Portland and Prosper Portland, and, in my opinion, a real testimony to the power of partnership. Since then, the market has continued to grow and evolve. It now takes place in both the summer and winter, drawing thousands of shoppers from all over the city to purchase from an ever-changing mix of BIPOC vendors. This season's market is the eighth celebration of local entrepreneurs, artists, and performers of color. Each of the vendors is also a member of the Mercatus Directory. That's an initiative Prosper Portland launched in two thousand sixteen with fifty businesses owned by people of color. That directory is now grown to over one thousand businesses. The market has also kept up with changing times. This year, I'm grateful to say that My People's Market, which is part of our Shop Small Shop Now campaign, is offering three ways to shop local and support BIPOC businesses this holiday season. By shopping the Market Window Shop at Ninth and Yamhill, by shopping online directly from the My People's Market website with curbside pickup, and of course, by visiting the market in person on the next three Sundays, December fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth at The Red on Southeast Salmon Street. I look forward to hearing the update from the team on My People's Market now that the initiative is nearing its fifth year, which is hard to believe because it felt like it just started yesterday. I'm going to now turn this over to Shay Flurry Betten and the Prosper Portland team. Welcome.
Thank you, and good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Shay Flurry Betten, and I am the Economic Development Director at Prosper Portland. It is my great pleasure to introduce the incredible work of the My People's Market team that you will be hearing from today. Next slide, please. So, all right. So, over the course of this report, we will cover a brief history of the market. We will meet the My People's Market Advisory Board, as well as hear about their work to cement the market's mission. We will take a deeper look at the values that ground and center the market with a focus on artists, connections, and community. And finally, we will share details and opportunities around how to engage in and support the upcoming eighth My People's Market, which, as the mayor said, kicks off this weekend, starting Sunday, December fifth. Next slide, please. Now, looking back, My People's Market launched in November of two thousand seventeen. And as Mayor Wheeler mentioned, it grew from a desire to create pathways for BIPOC entrepreneurs to connect with the travel industry and new market opportunities. The market was founded by Travel Portland and Prosper Portland. And YGB Portland, or Young Gifted and Black and Brown Portland, also joined the team to support the first-ever market in two thousand seventeen. And they have remained an integral part of the project ever since. At Prosper Portland, the market brings together several of our programs. My People's Market, the Mercatus BIPOC Business Directory, and our inclusive business resource network, as well as increasing connections to our Affordable Commercial Tenancy Program. And so, without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Amanda Park, who is the tireless and visionary project manager on our entrepreneurship team who co-created and led both Mercatus and the market since their inception. Amanda, take it away.
Wow, thanks Shay. It's quite the introduction. Good morning, Mayor and council members. Collaborations are an integral part of the market. Partners over the years have included Lloyd Center for hosting our first holiday pop-up space. The Portland Business Alliance's PDX pop-up program has connected so many My People's Market and Mercatus businesses with retail experiences. Built Oregon was a great partner in hosting My People's Market first online store on the Built Marketplace. And then, of course, our dedicated sponsors, New Seasons Market and Portland State School of Business. Both have not only provided fiscal support, but also have engaged with vendors. New Seasons provided workshops and one-on-one support for businesses to get on the shelves at their stores. And the Portland State School of Business has engaged their marketing students to work with small businesses on their marketing plans. In addition, community is at the heart of My People's Market. And we have been honored over the years to host several community organizations and nonprofits, including the Vanport Mosaic Project, Oregon Black Pioneers, Albina Queens, the Oregon N K Legacy Center, Sneaker Week, North Northeast Community Health Clinic, the list goes on and on. We have hosted eight markets across Portland, providing space for seventy-five to one hundred and fifty vendors at each market. And as we head into our anniversary year, we're happy to share that we've had three hundred and sixty-five unique BIPOC businesses that participated. And when we ask those folks how likely they are to engage with My People's Market, again, we consistently get scores between eight and a half, nine, ten. We have seen more than forty thousand people attend over the years, and that number is increasing with each market. Our last market, we reported more than seventy thousand dollars in sales, and that's with only about half of our vendors reporting. The market team is an innovative team. In addition to the market event, we're always exploring ways to be responsive to the needs and situations that small business owners are facing. Some of those initiatives include the pop-up shop that I talked about at Lloyd's Center, the online marketplace that we launched, or that we partnered with Built Oregon on. Two window shops, the first one that debuted over the summer and the second one that just opened last week at the corner of Ninth and Yamhill. The window features forty-nine different companies. Passersby can peruse the window, scan the QR code that's in the window, and then buy directly from business owners. This was a really innovative project that Portland made and Makers Union launched in the midst of the pandemic to really support small businesses in their sales and engagement with customers and being able to utilize some of the vacant commercial space that we have around town. So, we were really fortunate to be able to partner with them and to continue this initiative. Also, we're really excited to debut this season curbside pickup. The impetus for this project was to help shoppers and business owners find an alternative to dealing with the shipping delays that a lot of us are facing right now. So, if you go to the My People's Market website, you can see a listing of participating businesses. You order directly from them and you select curbside pickup. And you can pick up at the market on the fifth, the twelfth, or the nineteenth. What I'm really excited to share with you all today is the My People's Market Advisory Board. In April of two thousand twenty-one, Prosper Portland staff recruited a group of My People's Market community members to launch the My People's Market Advisory Board. The group's purpose will likely shift over time, but during the inaugural year, the hope is that they can make recommendations about the strategic vision for the market, establish continuity of the organization, establish continuity of organizational knowledge, and provide accountability. I'd like to welcome our first speaker from the Advisory Board, Rashonda Brooks. She's a filmmaker, lead organizer for YTB Portland, a project coordinator for Open Signal Labs, My People's Market Advisory Board member, and more generally, a curator of good vibes. Rashonda.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. And I just want to start with working with My People's Market team and everyone. It's just been really a joy. The advisory board has been a joy. And I just want to, I just wanted to express that. So, one of the first things that we did as an advisory group was to handle the task of coming up with a mission. And even when you're in a group of like-minded individuals, you want to be sure that you are all on the same page about the shared vision of what you're trying to, you know, move forward with. And our mission for the advisory board is My People's Market centers communities of color and celebration of business, arts, culture, prioritizing the well-being and comfort of people of color, providing the space and resources for new and existing business to grow and reach new markets and honoring local artists and performers for the vibrancy and joy of bringing space to the place. Providing space for artists of color is something that is hugely important to me because, to me, art is, you know, the heart of the market, is the heart of community space. And just having this resource and being able to let people in Portland know about the talent that is here and just share that space is also, you know, very healing. We'd like to really honor the local artists that come out to share their art in music and dance and, you know, actual physical arts such as graffiti or painting, or just, it's a myriad of ways. You know, the BIPOC community have shared their art with My People's Market in the larger Portland community. And I find that it's just, while I'm sharing words, it's also very hard to express just how great and vibrant this community is. Outside of My People's Market and my role on the advisory board is that I am one of the, as was expressed, founding members of the My People's Market team. And through YGB Portland, it's really been able to help me connect with bringing artists and community onto the My People's Market stage and also just being able to connect with other artists here in Portland. And creating, we've also been able to create wellness spaces connecting to Black and Brown practitioners here in Portland and also letting people know of just other ways that the Black and Brown community is here and is trying to show up for one another. As was expressed by Shay, we've been a partner with the market since two thousand seventeen. We've been able to activate the space in multiple ways and bringing hundreds of artists that the community wanted to see and also artists people were unaware of. And then, My People's Market has just also been able to provide space to pay these artists fair wages and higher. Often is a conversation that I have with artists at each market expressing that they really appreciate the fact that, you know, compensation is not a argument, or they're not being lowballed, or they're just not, you know, like, they just appreciate gratitude for how, you know, they are being compensated and respected for their art. And, excuse me. So, once again, just very happy that the market has been able to provide such space for the artists in this community and being able to just give them room to express who they are. And My People's Market has just been really a great space to bring people together, to build connections and community, and just to, you know, be who you are, show up for yourself, and just also see others like you. I would like to pass it off to Amber. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rashonda. Thank you, everyone who's having us here. My People's Market builds bridges. For newcomers and longtime residents, the market has become a space where you don't feel the gaze, where you feel like it's a place where you belong. You can relax your shoulders a little bit. You can be yourself, as Rashonda said. Because of that, the market has served as a welcoming launchpad for folks exploring entrepreneurship. And my role at Hacienda, managing the mercado, we have seen several businesses use the market as a significant milestone for their business journey. I'm going to share with you the story of one of our entrepreneurs, Reina Surita. She lost her job at the beginning of the pandemic, and she decided to start a business to support her family. Reina taught herself how to sew, how to sew face masks using the internet with YouTube videos. And then, she learned that it was a gift for her to build things. And she decided to start creating baby clothes using organic cotton. Reina joined the Mercado Empresarios program in March twenty-one and worked hard to get all the paperwork needed to launch her business in May of this year. She started selling in small farmers' markets during the summer. And working closely with one of our business advisors, we partnered her with a designer, and they developed their branding and their logo. So, she created this business that is now called Sofia Fabrics and Crafts, a small business that offers handcrafted organic clothing and other accessories for babies. During the summer, she was a secretary to the Mercado's community and got accepted as well to participate in My People's Market. Participating in My People's Market gave Reina the necessary confidence that she needed to continue with her business. Meeting clients that are happy with their product and the community of entrepreneurs like her show her that the working toward her goal of having a small business to support her family could be a dream come true. And that's the story, not just only for Reina, but for plenty of entrepreneurs of color, that the only way to connect with customers and the community like them is spaces like My People's Market. I want to introduce another fellow advisor in this committee, and she's one of those entrepreneurs. And she's going to share her journey with you as well. Camila, please.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. I am on the advisory board at My People's Market. I'm also the owner of Mimi's Fresh Teas, which is a social justice women empowerment company that I started back in two thousand eighteen. And My People's Market was my very first market that I did. I believe it was at the Memorial Coliseum in the summertime. And just the rich connections that I was able to develop there and the mentorship I had. Met other entrepreneurs who were professionals at going to markets and things like that and setting up for markets. And it gave me such wholesome advice on how to set my booth up for My People's Market. So, and that's me at the very first market at probably one of the dinners. So, yeah, My People's Market is definitely rich with community and culture and connection. So yeah, My People's Market is definitely rich with community and culture and connection and great music from YBG. And they also have like a wellness center as well. So I just love it. I mean, I can't get enough of it. I wish we could do it like at least four times a year. Next slide. And, you know, I did speak about my experience and I do know like a lot of other vendors can echo what I'm saying as far as like the connections that are built in My People's Market. The advice that, you know, Amanda has provided for a lot of entrepreneurs and also to just also networking with other folks. Yeah, and I just feel like the common theme for the market is exposure, networking, connection with customers and finding community. The one, the My People's Market in this past summer, I mean, we were, I was pretty busy. I had probably over a thousand people come to my booth and it was just really a great experience. And so with that, I will close and say, please join us for My People's Market kicking off December fifth. I will be there December fifth and I'm excited about it. And I believe there's going to be the fifth, the twelfth, and the nineteenth, so three consecutive Sundays. And we hope that you guys can stop by and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Great presentation and congratulations on all of your successes. That's just great to hear. Shay, does that complete the report?
Nearly mayor, I would just add that none of this would be possible without your support and without the commissioner's support. And so we just want to say thank you. We are deeply grateful both for the support over the years and for all of you that have made it out to the markets as well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Kealan, is there any public testimony on this report?
No one signed up for this item.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions or discussion before we vote, before I seek a motion to accept the report? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Some of.
Commissioner Hardesty moves. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan seconds the report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Matt.
Sorry.
Rubio.
Hi.
Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. And I just want to say a few things. Presentation was wonderful. Thank you, Amanda, Rashonda, Amber, and Camilla. Just the gratitude and positivity was so overwhelming and it's just wonderful to lift up good news that's brewing on the ground in this town. You know, innovation, creativity, entrepreneurship for communities that we were so often denied in this city and giving that access. It's reconciliation in action. I love hearing words like community connection, music, anyway, the on ramp to build these skills and confidence to grow their businesses. You know, when we're, when we are ourselves, as someone said, we shine and we have a much more prosperous life from the inside out. So I'm excited about I. Thanks.
Courtesy.
I want to thank Prosper Portland for continuing to support and strengthening My People's Market. If you have never been to My People's Market, if you, especially if you are a Black or Brown person, just walking in the room is enough to just bring you joy. And the more people you meet, the more joy you get. So I'm a big fan. I spend way too much money at My People's Market, but I can tell you so one of the speakers mentioned, wish we could do it four times a year. I wish we did it every month. I mean, there's really no, people got to eat every month, not just twice a year. So I'm with you. I think we should figure out how does this become a monthly opportunity for what I'm hearing is hearing, healing, building your business skills and being able to build community. I think that's what we should be talking about. So I am very happy to vote I today. But from my very first experience, both at Macada and at My People's Market, it is nothing like walking into a space and just feeling like, as somebody said, you can just breathe. I vote I.
Wheeler.
Well, thank you for the report and Shay Batine, thank you very much for, for bringing this forward and, and your collaboration and putting together a great panel to all of our panelists today. Thank you so much for, for your time and your enthusiasm, your passion. I view My People's Market as a story of collaboration, partnership, and the elevation of local businesses that are owned by people of color. And this is part of our commitment as a city council to build a more equitable city. So to all of you, thank you. Congratulations on your great work. I think all of us understand that small businesses are a crucial component of Portland's economy. And it's exciting to see the market continue to expand and to create opportunities for entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs of color. And frankly, everyone, as Commissioner Hardesty says, if you haven't been to a My People's Market, you have absolutely missed out. So please come down. There's plenty to purchase. There's plenty to eat. It's kid friendly. It's super fun. The vibe is very, very positive and I encourage people to show up. The first one is December fifth, coming right up. If you're interested, go to mypeoplesmarket.com to get your ticket to the market and learn about how you can do more to support these incredible businesses. I vote I. The report is accepted and thank you all. Next item, also a time certain eight, three, three, please.
Authorized grant agreements with three community partners to disperse funds for the Cannabis Emergency Relief Fund for a total of one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, I am going to turn this item over to the extremely capable leader of our cannabis program, Deshida Dawson. And want to acknowledge the interim director, Michael Montoya is also here to answer any questions that you may have. Take it away, Deshida, unless Michael has some opening comments? Nope. Okay, take it away, Deshida.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hardesty. Good morning, Mayor and esteemed commissioners. For the record, my name is Deshida Dawson and I'm the cannabis program supervisor. Today, our program will be presenting an ordinance to support the Cannabis Emergency Relief Fund. And as you might recall, council voted to support launching this fund with one point three three million in one time allocation from cannabis tax revenue. This is actually, even though we haven't implemented, become a benchmark nationally in terms of use of cannabis tax revenue. I will turn this presentation over to our licensing and policy coordinator, Christina Corse. Since budget approval, she has led the research, planning, and development of the ordinance details that we'll share here today. I will remain on the call for any questions afterwards as well, but I am excited to share our plan of action for SURF. Christina, I'll pass the mic to you.
Thank you, Deshida. And thank you, commissioners and Mayor Wheeler. May I please have my presentation? Thank you. My name is Christina Corse and I'm the licensing and policy coordinator for the City of Portland Cannabis Program. In November twenty sixteen, City of Portland voters approved ballot measure twenty six dash one eight zero to impose a three percent local tax on retail cannabis sales. The revenue from a three percent local tax on retail cannabis sales is expected to be managed independently and be dedicated to three specific areas, including support for neighborhood small businesses, especially minority and women owned businesses. In March twenty twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown declared a state of emergency due to concerns around COVID nineteen pandemic and issued an executive stay at home order. This order closed schools and many businesses that were considered non essential. Cannabis businesses were deemed essential and were fortunately able to continue operating, although unfortunately, open for business made the cannabis industry employees vulnerable to contracting coronavirus. Employees with small children were being forced out of the workforce or having a reduction in hours in order to stay home with their children due to a lack of childcare and the need for homeschooling. These cash based businesses were also vulnerable to what would become a hundred and fifteen percent increase in violent crime reported from the previous year and vandalism due to the civil unrest seen around the city and country. As time progressed, the distress felt by the cannabis industry only worsened. An early September twenty twenty rapid expansion of multiple wildfires ran rampant across the state, making the Oregon twenty twenty wildfire season one of the most destructive on record. Oregon wildfires have caused unprecedented devastation to the entire cannabis industry supply chain with significant uncertainty surrounding future outcomes and long term sustainability. Portland licensees are not immune to the impacts affecting other parts of the state as the whole cannabis industry is one ecosystem. This is not the first time council is hearing of the distress felt by the entire Portland cannabis industry. In October twenty twenty, the city's cannabis policy oversight team, or better known as CPOT, wrote a letter to city council about the negative impacts on Portland's cannabis industry due to increased robberies and Oregon wildfires. Members of CPOT again testified in November of twenty twenty on the same subject. Next slide, please. I would like to thank the commission and Mayor Wheeler for hearing and recognizing the need for the cannabis emergency relief. Because on June ninth, twenty twenty one, council approved the city adopted budget for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, which includes a one time allocation of one point three three million dollars to support the Cannabis Emergency Relief Fund. The Cannabis Emergency Relief Fund has been developed to provide the one point three three million in grants to small licensed cannabis businesses within Portland city limits and to cannabis industry workers that are economically impacted from COVID nineteen vandalism, robberies, wildfires, and the residual effects of illness, trauma, and grief suffered from such impacts. Next slide, please. On July twenty second, twenty twenty, Portland City Council approved a plan to distribute a hundred and fourteen million in Federal Cares Act relief to the community. Federally cannabis is still illegal as it is classified as a Schedule One controlled substance, thus making cannabis businesses ineligible for federal relief funding. Fifteen million of the hundred fourteen million was allocated to Prosper Portland for the city's allocation of small business relief funding. Five hundred and thirty six grants were dispersed. The city also allocated one million of the general fund for first round funding. However, only one cannabis business was provided relief funding. Through a small leftover allocation of cannabis tax revenue from the cannabis program, a hundred and seventy thousand was dispersed to twelve cannabis businesses for COVID relief with the help of New Leaf Project. These numbers show that cannabis businesses can be categorized as an underserved industry in terms of receiving emergency relief and have received little to no emergency relief support from the city despite contributions to tax revenue. Currently, there are three hundred and seventy four active cannabis licenses within Portland. Two hundred and twenty three of these businesses are retailers which have suffered the greatest loss from repeated theft and vandalism in our city. Currently, with how SURF has developed, seventy five percent of Portland cannabis businesses will be eligible for SURF. Next slide. There is a misconception of cannabis businesses being large when actually they are small. Seventy, seventy six percent of cannabis businesses bring in a total annual revenue of two million dollars or less. Due to cannabis being federally illegal, cannabis businesses are unable to deduct usual business tax expenses similar to deductions taken by other businesses. And therefore cannabis businesses pay out an average of seventy percent, we've seen as high as ninety percent in taxes where other small businesses pay out only approximately twenty percent in taxes. Looking at data obtained from the Small Business Administration and also from Prosper Portland on the maximum amount of revenue allowed and to deem a business eligible for small business relief, SURF has been designed for the maximum amount of revenue to two million or less. Small business eligibility for Prosper Portland was set at a maximum of five million dollars annually. Agriculture is capped at eight million and small business, small retail business has a maximum annual revenue of sixteen point five million in order to be eligible as a small business. Next slide. Nearing the end of twenty twenty one, the cannabis industry is still reeling in hardship and continued increased criminal activity. Data obtained by the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, sorry, Oregon Liquor Cannabis Commission, or OLCC, indicates two hundred Portland cannabis businesses reported theft of product and or cash between March twenty twenty and November twenty twenty one. Some businesses being victimized more than once. These thefts range from looting to armed robbery, some resulting in bodily injury, sexual assault, and even homicide. There was a hundred and fifteen percent increase in violent crime from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. The average number of reported thefts for twenty twenty was eleven per month, while in twenty twenty one, the average reported number is six per month. As you can see, the frequency of crime is remaining steady and with each new variant of COVID nineteen, the problems spoken about before city council in the end of twenty twenty still remain. Therefore, there is an urgency to disperse these emergency relief funds into the hands of the cannabis business owners and employees as timely and efficiently as possible before the hardship felt by this industry puts many of our small business owners out of business. Next slide. I have spent the greater part of six months researching and developing the approved comprehensive plan for SURF that outlines all the eligibility requirements for businesses and individuals and the actual application for relief funding. Details of SURF were derived from assessing the needs of the industry, analyzing data trends, researching successful small business relief programs locally and across the country, and also speaking with cannabis industry advocates. City of Portland Cannabis Program will work with three uniquely selected community partners for administration of funds. Community partners are approved to receive up to twenty percent for administrative overhead cost. This is not to say that each community partner will receive the full twenty percent. The community partners will only be allowed to utilize funds to administer SURF and not for their own operating budgets. The administrative overhead cost is to be used for marketing, outreach, intake, processing, verification, payment, and reporting for SURF. Applications will be submitted to the community partner directly and accepted on a rolling basis. Funds will be available starting February first, twenty twenty two and must be fully dispersed by June twenty twenty two. Individuals and entities may only qualify for and receive funds one time in the fiscal year. Funds are being prioritized for historically disadvantaged populations. This includes minority, women, veteran, and small or low income, and it will be dispersed based on level of need. Individuals are eligible to receive up to five thousand dollars in emergency relief. All businesses are eligible to receive up to twenty five thousand dollars in emergency relief. The community partners will have the discretion to gauge the amount of funding eligible for based on the verification of documents submitted. Next slide, please. This is a list of the business eligibility. I will not read off each one individually, rather I would like to highlight a few. The business is located, the business must be located in the city of Portland as well as the business headquarters must be located in Oregon and doing business in Portland, in Portland, Oregon. They must be current in good standing with local, state, and applicable federal taxing and licensing authorities. Must be historically disadvantaged owned or hold three or less pending or active marijuana regulatory license by the city of Portland and OLCC. Annual total revenue is less than two million dollars. The funds must be applied only to licensed businesses and or its employees within Portland. And these funds will not be eligible for expenses covered by other grants and insurance and or insurance. Next slide. This is also a list of individual eligibility. Again, I will not read each one individually, rather I would like to highlight a few. You must be working within the city of Portland. You must be working on behalf of an OLCC licensed producer, processor, wholesaler, or retailer, including the licensees working in licensed businesses or managing information and CTS, that's the metric tracking system. They must have an approved and active OLCC marijuana worker permit and to be active, be part of a historically disadvantaged population or have annual income that does not exceed eighty percent of the median income for city of Portland metro area. This ranges from roughly fifty four thousand dollars to a hundred and two thousand based on family size. The range was fifty four thousand for one person. Having eight individuals in your family would be a hundred and two thousand. Next slide, please. This is not an exhaustive list of eligibility expenses. SURF funds may be used for things such as expenses reasonably necessary to keep the eligible business operational and to safely meet local, state, and federal COVID nineteen mitigation, for maintenance and repairs needed to restore premise following damage from vandalism or break in, increased security measures needed to maintain safe working environment. This does not include armed security guards or purchase of firearms or other weapons. The expenses associated with employees' need for time off due to COVID nineteen for theirs, for themselves or their, to care for their dependents as many employees do not have paid time off or medical coverage. for themselves or to care for their dependents, as many employees do not have paid time off or medical coverage. Expenses to cover trauma or grief counseling associated with robberies or wildfire and the cost to cover medical expenses due to COVID-19 for self or dependents. Next slide, please. Here are some examples of documents needed to verify eligibility for SURF funds. This is also not an exhaustive list of document verification, and as you can see from this list, the amount of time and attention needed to be dedicated to verification of documents is outside of the capacity of the cannabis program at this time, and therefore better suited being contracted out to our community partners. Next slide, please. During this time of SURF program development, the cannabis program had to carefully examine whether these funds should be dispersed in-house or by the assistance of a community partner. If done in-house, the estimated minimum personnel cost per year for salary and benefits ranged from 206,000 to 233,000. This is for a SURF coordinator and a SURF support specialist. The time allocated for funds would be dispersed as early as June 2023 and would take 18 to 24 months. For funds disbursed by a community partner, the administrative cost with a maximum of 20% in approved budget was 266,000. If the community partners were to receive less than 20%, 201,000 is estimated based on selected partners. The time allocated for fund dispersed by June 2022 at the latest would be six months, and also by working with community partners, we're supporting and stimulating community-based organizations. Next slide, please. The city of Portland Cannabis Program will work with three uniquely selected community partners for administration and dispersal of funds. Community partners approved for up to 20% to cover administrative overhead costs. The administrative cost is for marketing, outreach, intake, processing, verification, payment, and reporting for SURF. Funds will only be allowed to utilize funds to administer SURF and not for their own operating budgets. The community partners selected are not being funded by SURF. They are dispersing these funds to assist with a level of need that is harming cannabis businesses and will eventually put them out of business if we continue on the same trajectory. Our plan allows the city to support relief efforts while only managing community partners' compliance and is lowering costs than doing in-house. The organizations selected as community partners are led by historically disadvantaged populations by BIPOC and women-led. So not only is the relief funding being prioritized for recipients, we are also prioritizing the partners selected. All community partners selected also have firsthand knowledge of the cannabis industry, the owners and the workers. SURF is being modeled after an umbrella grant agreement that was made effective on December 15th, 2020 between the city of Portland and Cal State of Oregon. This is the Oregon Workers Relief Fund. It was for 1.75 million for unemployment-like benefits for those who cannot access state and federal unemployment benefits in response to unprecedented impacts of COVID-19. If there is an organization whose mission is to grant funds to various grantees, then the city could enter a grant agreement with the organization to support its grant distribution program. There may be other organizations that have programs the city may support through a grant rather than large foundations. They do need to tend to have experience executing and administering grants. New Leaf has funded more than $500,000 to cannabis businesses, and with New Leaf's grant program experience in leading the community partners selected, the city is opening doors and providing an opportunity for smaller organizations, which are all led by historically disadvantaged populations, to gain valuable experience. This is a prime example of supporting and stimulating community-based organizations. Next slide, please. The community partners selected are New Leaf, who will receive $680,000. New Leaf's mission is to build generational wealth via the legal cannabis industry for the communities disproportionately harmed by cannabis criminalization. New Leaf is designed to increase success outcomes for people of color to the cannabis industry, either as business professionals or owners. To date, New Leaf has funded more than 500,000 cannabis businesses, which are 100% owned by founders of color and/or founders arrested for cannabis. Under the incubation of New Leaf Project and a dedicated $150,000, Cannabis Workers Coalition will help extend support specifically to individuals working in the cannabis industry. The Cannabis Workers Coalition is a nonprofit community-based work center that organizes and provides support to low-wage workers by reducing barriers to access. The initiative will receive $350,000. The initiative is an accelerator program and event platform with a special focus on conducting research in order to understand how to create meaningful cannabis social equity programs. Since 2018, the initiative has accelerated 15 female-led companies, and during the pandemic, completed one of the most comprehensive white papers, national databases examining all local and state social equity programs, funding allocated by those jurisdictions and indicators of success for social equity licensees. Through research and engagement, the initiative ensures the cannabis industry remains the most progressive and balanced emerging industry possible. Oregon Cannabis Association will receive $300,000. The Oregon Cannabis Association is a nonprofit diverse group of cultivators, processors, retailers, entrepreneurs, and allied businesses. OCA's mission is to help one another thrive through networking events, educational workshops, and political representation. I would now like to introduce you to Jeanette Ward Horton, founder of New Leaf, Amy Margolis, founder of Initiative, and Savannah Monae, executive director of Cannabis Workers Coalition. Jeanette?
Thank you, thank you, Christina, and thank you commissioners. It's great to be here with you today. I want to make two points in my testimony today about the Cannabis Emergency Relief Fund grants, or SURF. One, these funds are a smart investment, and one that's needed now. And two, dispersing these funds via culturally specific community organizations builds capacity for serving Portland's most vulnerable communities. Commissioner Hardisty reminded us of the Portlanders with the least resources who are impacted most by COVID. We just heard from Mercatus, and you all expressed your gratitude for that work that's really building generational wealth for our most vulnerable communities, and that's the same work that these SURF grants will do. Entrepreneurship is documented as one of the fastest ways to create generational wealth, and the assets that build wealth are what give people the resources and self-resiliency to weather a storm like COVID. The cannabis industry is a legitimate tax revenue generating industry that has the potential to create generational wealth, and if economic reports are true, great potential. We need to give Black and Brown entrepreneurs who have the least access to business capital the funds they need to weather the economic storms of owning a small business. COVID requirements put strains on all businesses, wildfires and robberies. Christina spoke to most of the things that cannabis businesses are under, from 280E to the high cost of regulation. In 2020, this commission approved emergency grants for cannabis businesses, and we gave 19 small businesses grants on average $9,000. The slide said 12, that was round one. There are another seven in the second round, so just for the record, 19 businesses received those grants. Employees were retained, businesses invested to lower their long-term costs and more. We don't just fund these businesses, we follow up with them, we support them, we're there for them, and we know what work this money did. These grants, without hyperbole, saved businesses and jobs. These grants helped bolster the diversity and economic impact of Portland's cannabis industry. The second point I want to make is that funding, distributing these grants to culturally specific organizations like New Project does important work to build capacity to serve our most vulnerable communities. New Project is a Black-led, woman-led organization. 73% of the businesses we fund are women-owned. 95% are BIPOC-owned, and 50% of those BIPOC businesses are Black-owned, and on her funding rate for Black-owned businesses. The remaining 5%, if you were doing the math, are people not of color but who were arrested for cannabis crimes. In total, more than a third of our funded companies are owned by people who've been arrested for cannabis crimes. I myself have been arrested for a cannabis crime. Again, culturally-specific-led organizations reach the communities we serve with great rates, so I want to thank you for the way this program has been developed, the way it will build capacity for the organizations that are serving our most vulnerable communities, and the thought with which you put equity to the dispersment of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amy?
So much, Christina, Mayor Wheeler, and city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Amy Margolis, and I'm an attorney who's worked with hundreds, if not thousands, of entrepreneurs in the Oregon cannabis industry, and I also run the initiative. The initiative has provided incubation and acceleration support for women-led cannabis businesses. And during the pandemic, we focused on broad-scale research regarding local and state social equity programming. We've provided an in-depth white paper, inclusive database, and are set to start a second phase of tracking this kind of information nationally. What I learned, both through my hands-on experience representing so many entrepreneurs, both in Oregon and across the country, and many, many months of research, interviews, and roundtables, is that the number-one need that businesses have, particularly those in historically disadvantaged communities, is funding. And I would like to add that having looked at every single local and state program, and what I really want the council to hear, as Dushida Dawson said, is that providing these grants is actually groundbreaking policy and will be extremely impactful, and Portland will be a leader in a movement. I want to applaud the city council and the Office of Community and Civic Life, as well as the cannabis program for creating this opportunity and a lifeline for these Portland businesses. Many years ago, I participated in the original meetings as to how the cannabis tax money would be spent. I can say that the Cannabis Emergency Relief Fund is exactly what the stakeholders who were in that room envisioned and hoped that the revenue would be spent on, and this is truly a reinvestment of those funds back into the community and help who are the most vulnerable. SURF will provide a necessary backstop for struggling businesses, support equity and inclusion in the Portland cannabis industry, as well as helping to ensure the survival and success of underrepresented communities and those who have been most impacted by the failed war on drugs. I look forward to working with the city on this program, and I thank all of you for creating it. It is extremely crucial that we have this available, and I look forward to being a good partner.
Thank you, Amy. Savannah?
Thank you so much, and good morning, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. My name is Savannah Monae, and I'm the co-founder and executive director of the Cannabis Workers Coalition. In the last year, we have provided support directly to workers seeking justice against their employers and have heard firsthand testimonies from workers about their experience working on the front lines during a worldwide pandemic. Because of the many challenges faced last year, owners were forced to reduce their hours of operation or temporarily shut down stores, leaving thousands of cannabis workers in the city to fend for themselves. The average Portland budtender makes $14.25 an hour, and often without health benefits. According to the Living Wage Calculator developed by MIT, an adult without dependents would have to make $18.86 to live comfortably within the city. The financial devastation caused by the pandemic was felt by everyone, but low-wage workers and historically disadvantaged communities are impacted the hardest. The SURF fund would act as a catalyst for many families employed by cannabis, offering them an opportunity to rebuild the lives they once had. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Savannah. This concludes the presentation, so if there's any questions, we can take those now.
Very good, colleagues. Does anybody have any questions at this particular juncture? This is an emergency ordinance, and if not, Kealan, can I ask, do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up for this item.
Very good. Any further discussion? Great, great presentation. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Maps?
I want to thank Commissioner Hardisty for bringing this item forward. Looks like this program is doing great work. For these reasons, I vote I.
Rubio?
I want to thank Commissioner Hardisty for bringing this item forward as well, and also thank Director Montoya, Dushida Dawson, and Christina, and everyone else who presented for this informative presentation and all your hard work. The sector has such specific additional challenges, as we've heard from wildfires and impacts from the increased robberies and crimes that make things uniquely more devastating to the sector. So I'm really grateful for the commissioner's leadership and the leadership of the Civic Life team to ensure that these small businesses and workers receive the long-needed support to, in some small measure, recoup some costs during this time. I also want to acknowledge that it's not nearly enough to compensate for the true need nor the trauma and emotional, physical toll exerted on these businesses, and that's why we're very grateful to have the trusted community organizations that have stepped up to partner with the city on this project and get these funds out the door and into the communities as quickly as possible. And, you know, there's still, as we've heard in this presentation, a high level of racial disparities when it comes to cannabis ownership, so I'm appreciating as well the preceding conversation we had about, you know, my people's market and the importance of BIPOC businesses in this community, and the cannabis industry here continues to be one that we must be intentional about ensuring conditions for BIPOC owners and workers are set so that they can actually thrive and succeed and create that multi-generational wealth. So I hope that the project continues to expand and evolve during this time and that we're continuing to make more investments like these to strengthen BIPOC communities and BIPOC businesses, especially when the market's hurting. So very happy to vote I.
Ryan?
Excuse me. First, thanks for that great presentation, Dushida, Christina, Jeanette, Amy, Savannah. It was very well done. And thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for your leadership in the Office of Community and Civic Life for bringing this emergency ordinance forward to support small businesses in Portland, specifically those in the cannabis industry. It was really clear from the presentation that the past few years have devastated the industry from statewide wildfires to the COVID-19, to the increased vandalism and robbery. The cannabis industry has been on the front lines. These emergency relief offered by the Cannabis Emergency Relief Fund is more than necessary. It's crucial for the success of these businesses. As such, I'm thrilled that we are an innovative partner for this emerging sector that proves Portland and the state of Oregon can lean into it and to ensure that our number-one cash crop will bring prosperity to our market and with a much-needed racial equity lens. I vote I.
Hardisty?
Well, I want to also thank the excellent team at Civic and Community Life for once again being innovative and visionary about how we can use our intentions in a very specific and strategic way to support the survival of these small businesses. I can never talk about cannabis without talking about the only business on the planet that pays 85% of their dollars in taxes yet are unable to bank like we, the city bank with cannabis tax dollars and the state and everybody else. It still boggles my mind that that is the reality of this business. But having said that, what we know is the people who were negatively impacted by previous cannabis policy, the ones whose lives have generationally been ruined because of our tackle on crime approach, are not the people that are today making billions of dollars off of the marijuana crops and the marijuana stores that are on every corner in the city of Portland. So the reality is, if we are going to be intentional, we have to invest in businesses that are supporting BIPOC community members. And I have to say, I am always in awe of the national leadership that Dusha has brought to our cannabis program. We have been national leaders since the day she showed up, and she's really helping us set a standard that has really led to a real equity approach, right? You know, we talk about lenses a lot, but at the end of the day, our people of color benefiting from our policies, and I couldn't be prouder of the work and the leadership that's being shown, not just here at the city of Portland, but really at the national level. So I honor the incredible team we have that continues to push the envelope and push us to be better than we think we can be. I am very honored to vote I. Thank you again.
Wheeler?
Yeah, this is an easy ordinance to support. Obviously, the cannabis industry is critically important to the small business economy here in the city of Portland, and the report lays that out very clearly. It also lays out some of the challenges that are unique to the cannabis industry, both locally as well as nationally, and I'm glad that we, as a city council, can help overcome some of those obstacles, help this business continue to thrive, and acknowledge that it is a business that is uniquely supportive and inclusive of women and BIPOC entrepreneurs. I also just want to say, colleagues, I'm really pleased with the work that we've done as a council around supporting BIPOC businesses throughout. around supporting BIPOC businesses throughout the COVID crisis. We used a significant amount of our CARES dollars. We focused ARPA dollars, we focused general fund dollars towards supporting all of our small businesses and entrepreneurs throughout the crisis. But we have specifically highlighted and supported BIPOC businesses in this city. And that does get us closer to the values that we have ascribed as a council to the work we want to do to be an anti racist city and be inclusive and supportive of those segments of our population that haven't always received support from local government. So I'm glad to support this as part of a larger series of efforts we've made to support small businesses and help them all get through this COVID crisis. This is one small step that won't do it in and of itself, but I'm glad that we have this opportunity through civic life to work with the cannabis industry directly, hear their needs and support them in ways that the industry says they need to see support from us as a city council. I vote I. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Next up, eight three four, please.
Proclaim November sixteenth, twenty twenty one to be Darcel Day.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, in nineteen sixty seven, Walter Cole opened Darcel Fifteen Showplace on Northwest Third and Davis. And it has remained open since, moving through some very rough times, even remaining open through much of the pandemic, making it the oldest drag club and home to the longest running drag show on the West Coast. Walter Cole began at Darcel's in nineteen sixty seven and still performs as part of the company. And Walter holds the Guinness's world record for the world's oldest performing drag queen. Last year, Darcel Fifteen was listed in the National Register of Historic Places as one of only two known drag cabarets to open prior to nineteen seventy in the United States. I am so thrilled to say that we have Walter Cole Darcel here this morning. And it's with much honor that I turn the floor over to you. Welcome.
He's making his way back after being sent away. Hold please.
Well, thank you, Kevin. We are running a little bit late, so this is all understandable.
So Mayor, after this presentation, maybe we'll do a time check.
Yes, we're, we're way behind schedule and we, of course, have a full afternoon as well, but we may have to move some of the morning agenda to this afternoon.
I'm getting updates that he's almost ready.
Commissioner Ryan, would you recommend we take a two minute recess?
Yeah, why don't we do a bio break for just two minutes? Is that good?
All right, we are in recess for two minutes.
Recording stopped.
And we have Darcel.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, but let me, let me, let me go back a little bit. It's so nice to have you here, Darcel. We just wanted to make sure that you could hear the intro again. So in nineteen sixty seven, Walter Cole opened Darcel Fifteen Showplace on Northwest Third and Davis. It has remained open since then, even throughout many challenges, including the most recent pandemic. It's the longest running drag show on the West Coast. Walter Cole began at Darcel's in nineteen sixty seven and still performs as part of the company. And Walter holds the Guinness's world record for the world's oldest performing drag queen. Last year, Darcel Fifteen was listed in the National Register of Historic Places as one of only two drag cabarets to open prior to nineteen seventy in the United States. So before we go forward with the proclamation to honor you, we want to give the floor over to you, Walter Cole, known by most as Darcel. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you. Good, good morning. This, what, what a nice time to call me. I'm just ready to talk forever. You know, I'm the oldest performing drag queen in the world. We might add that. I hate to correct the MC, but you know. And also, we are the longest running cabaret drag show in the United States. And still going strong, we, we got through the closers and opens and open and close, open and close. Now we have real people in the audience and it's, it's been exciting. And you know what, I'm like, we have every night that we, I'm on the stage and we have people from all over the world visiting Portland. I, I don't know if you know how many people come to Portland to do their bachelorette parties, to, to just be in Portland, Oregon, and I am very proud of that. I've been, I'm born in Portland and ninety one years ago and here we are.
Thank you so much, Walter Cole and Darcel. It's just.
Darcel, it's fine.
Today.
I'm with Darcel.
All right. It's great to have you here. And I know many of my colleagues would like to say a few words before we read the proclamation. The floor is open to the colleagues.
Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for bringing this item forward. I'm delighted to join you in declaring November sixteenth, two thousand twenty one to be Darcel Day here in Portland, Oregon. On Darcel Day, we celebrate a Portland icon and institution. And of course, I speak of Walter Cole, who most Portlanders know as Darcel. Darcel is Walter's stage name. Like Darcel, Walter Cole is a classic Portland character. Cole, as we heard, was born in nineteen thirty and raised in Portland's Linton neighborhood. Cole is a veteran, worked at Fred Myers, and around nineteen sixty nine, Cole developed his alter ego Darcel. Cole has described his Darcel persona as quote, sequins on the eyelids, lots of feathers, big hair, big jewels, and lots of wisecracks. Over the past half century, Darcel has become a beloved and iconic Portland character. Darcel has served as grand marshal of the Portland Rose Festival Starlight Parade and received the city's Spirit of Portland Award. As we've heard, Guinness World Records has certified Darcel as the oldest drag queen performer on the West Coast. Now, all of that is Darcel the person. And then there is also the Darcel Fifteen Showplace, the nightclub built by Darcel. As we've heard, around nineteen sixty seven, Cole purchased a tavern in Northwest Portland and renamed it the Darcel Fifteen Showplace. A few years ago, Darcel told the Oregonian about those first hours after taking over the building. Darcel said, quote, "I didn't have a two day plan. I walked in there and opened the door and wept and thought, what have I done?" But that didn't last long. In fact, that, although that panic didn't last long, Darcel's showcase sure did. Today, Darcel's is Portland's oldest drag club and is home to the longest running drag show on the West Coast. In fact, recently, Darcel's was placed on the National Register of Historic Places because of its important role in the LGBTQIA plus history. And of course, I think we should remember on Darcel Day that this is more about, this is more than just celebrating a beloved Portland character and institution. Darcel Day is also about celebrating and embracing Portland's LGBTQIA plus community. On Darcel Day, we recommit ourselves to making Portland an inclusive, welcoming and safe city for all Portlanders, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Mr. Mayor, colleagues, for these reasons and more, I'm delighted to join you in declaring November sixteen, two thousand twenty one to be Darcel Day here in Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio.
That better. I could not have said that better.
Oh, thank you. I'm honored.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioner Ryan for bringing this great proclamation forward. And thank you so much to you, Darcel, also known as Walter, for your incredible contributions to the city. We all can't imagine a Portland without Darcel's. This club is an institution in our community and has served as a place and a space for refuge, celebration and community for decades. And the very fact of its presence and impact in our community has demonstrated to Portlanders across multiple generations that at Darcel's, it's okay to bring and be your full selves and to bring your fun selves and to have a wonderful time and celebration together. And I count myself as one of among the thousands of people over the years who've been lucky enough to celebrate a life event together with you and your cabaret. And Darcel, thank you again for all you do for Portland's cultural ecosystem in vibrant community and for the LGBTQIA plus community in Portland. We're so fortunate for this very special part of history and culture that exists in our city. And we also all look forward to another forty great more years of celebrations together at ourselves. So congratulations, much deserved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty.
That was fabulous, Commissioner Rubio. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan and Mayor Wheeler for bringing this proclamation forward. I, I think everything has been said except how big your heart is, Darcel. It is clear that the person that you are is a person that cares deeply about Portland. You are committed to a thriving Portland where everyone is welcome and accepted with a smile. Your shows have for generations created joy. And I can't think of anything that Portland needs more now of than joy. And it's wonderful that you've been honored on a historic registry. I mean, how cool is that? It is very cool. And but what's even cooler is to know that I know you as a human who is compassionate and you care about everyone. And I just want you to know that I want to celebrate the human today, the one with that big heart that cares passionately and brings joy wherever you go. I'm happy also to support this presentation.
Thank you, Darcel.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, yes, much has been said. I just want to add a couple of personal anecdotes. As a high school kid in the late seventies, I'll never forget this. I was so surprised when my mom and her friend came home much later than usual. They were giggling with such joy in their hearts. And then they started reminiscing in the kitchen about their evening they had at a drag show called Darcel. I was, again, living in North Portland with my mom. I was in my questioning years, my fear of being discovered years, if you will. But the hope that I had in my heart as I listened to my mom and her friend talk about their joyful evening at Darcel is something I'll never forget. I fast forward over just this past decade where I've spent many memorable evenings at Darcel's. And what I witness is people from rural Oregon, tourists from all over other cities in this country and internationally. And they're just buzzing with joy as they leave what you've created, which is a sanctuary. You, my friend Darcel, you've lifted our city locally, nationally, internationally. You're truly at the top of the list as an ambassador of the city. And so along with so many, I have grieved out deep gratitude for your legacy and for your current action to help Portland be seen as a safe and joyful place. It truly is. We see you, we need you, and we look forward to celebrating you today and for many, many more years. You represent the heart and the soul of my hometown. And I know your angel Roxy is holding you at this very moment. With much gratitude and love, I salute you, Darcel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And before I read the proclamation, Darcel, I want to thank you and I want to thank the LGBTQ community at large for their contributions to this proclamation. Now, I have a reputation as being somewhat boring, which is probably a good thing for an elected official. But Darcel, I believe I am still the only mayor in the history of this city to put a dollar in your chaps. And so that's a record that I'm also proud of. I also want to thank Commissioner Ryan. I want to thank Commissioner Ryan and his staff for taking the lead on bringing this forward. And now I will read the proclamation on behalf of the entire city council. Whereas the presence and visibility of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, two spirited and other sexual and gender minority communities is vital to the quality of life of all residents and visitors alike in the city of Portland, a city of bridges that's known as a safe harbor and home for this community. And whereas the city of Portland is committed to diversity, social justice, equity and mutual respect is a fundamental aspect of a healthy community. And whereas Darcel Fifteen Showplace opened on Northwest Third and Davis in nineteen sixty seven, making it Portland's oldest drag club and home to the longest running drag show on the West Coast. And whereas Darcel Fifteen was listed in the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand twenty as the showplace is one of the only two known drag cabarets to open prior to nineteen seventy in the entire United States. And whereas Darcel's owner, Walter W. Cole, who performed and is still performing as part of the company, holds the Guinness World Record as the world's oldest performing drag queen. And whereas Walter W. Cole's visionary dream has captured the spirit of Portland and woven Darcel's into the fabric of our city. And whereas that long and ongoing struggle of the LGBTQIA two S plus communities for basic civil and human rights continues to provide inspiration to all who work against discrimination and oppression. And whereas now more than ever, we must not overlook the LGBTQIA two S plus community, nor allow them to be invisible during physical and social distancing measures and attacks on their rights across the country. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, City of Roses, do hereby proclaim November sixteen of two thousand twenty one to be Darcel Day in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this day. Thank you, Darcel, for all that you have done.
Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you so much and I deeply appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, and you have a wonderful day.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Hardisty had asked for a time check. Commissioners, what I would recommend we do, it is currently 11:55. I would recommend that we push on until 1:00 PM. And whatever we don't finish by 1:00 PM, I would propose we stick at the end of our time certain agenda this afternoon. I realize that makes for a very, very long day. But I think it's probably better for us to take a break in the middle of the day and at least get that hour to rejuvenate, if that's okay with people. It looks like I'm seeing all thumbs up, so we'll do that. So we move now to the regular agenda. First item is 846, please.
A settlement of Aaron Cantu bodily injury lawsuit for the sum of $125,000 involving the Portland Police Bureau.
Colleagues, this ordinance resolves a bodily injury lawsuit filed against the city in October of 2019. Senior Deputy City Attorney Rob Yamachika and Senior Claims Analyst Karen Bond are here to present the ordinance. Welcome, Rob and Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. I think it's awesome that I get to say I'm the first city attorney to ever follow D'Arcel. I won't call this a stage, and I think that's fantastic. I'm sorry I can't bring something more joyful in front of the council. But I'm a lawyer, so that's what you get. Sorry about that. So this case stems from an August 4, 2018 protest that occurred downtown Portland at Waterfront Park. Mr. Cantu was gathered with other protesters on Southwest Columbia and Southwest Nato. After warnings from the PBB to disperse and warnings that riot control agents may be used, PBB launched aerial distraction devices towards the crowd. Mr. Cantu was struck by a part of one of the ADDs and it lodged in his bicycle helmet that he was wearing, which caused a head injury. The ADD that struck Mr. Cantu was launched at a lower angle than recommended by the manufacturer. The upward slope of Southwest Columbia and the tree canopy may have contributed to the ADD being launched at a lower angle than was recommended. Mr. Cantu filed a federal lawsuit against the city and four individually named officers alleging excessive force, assault, battery negligence, and other violations. On September 21st of this year, the parties participated in a judicial settlement conference with a federal judge and agreed upon a settlement for $125,000, including attorney's fees, to resolve this lawsuit. The City Attorney's Office and Risk Management recommends that the City Council approve this settlement. Mr. Chavez, who is the plaintiff's attorney in this case, has some comments that he'd like to make before counsel. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have after the case's presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Rob, as always. And just as with all of our cases of city, I appreciate Mr. Yamachika and the others at the City Attorney's Office, and appreciate their professionalism and prudence in handling many of these matters. I'm wondering if I could share a PowerPoint slide. I think I have the ability to do that. Okay, so. Can people see that? Okay. So we're here to settle Mr. Cantu's case. There are other plaintiffs in this matter, one of whom has settled already. The other still has a pending claim. It's likely that we'll resolve that later in the course of litigation. So what was happening on August 4? Far-right groups chose Portland for another rally. Throughout the summer of 2018, as well as the summer of 2017, far-right groups had targeted Portland because, in large part, and they were rather clear about these goals and aims because of our values, because of our progressiveness, because of the many cultures and people who live here, who they oppose, and frankly, because of the Bureau's history of preferential treatments for groups like theirs. In the months previous, this was almost like clockwork. The alt-right would show up, they would instigate brawls, and the police would clear out only the anti-fascist groups. And it wasn't lost in anybody. There was that dynamic. And indeed, groups like Patriot Prayer, the Proud Boys, they all hoped for that result. They all cheered on those results whenever PBB would assault their counter-demonstrators. So what do I mean about deference? Well, it was very clear that Mr. Gibson was going to be showing up on August 4 with guns. He had spoken both at this event, on the August 4 event, and in previous events, how he expected people to become armed and to show up and to counter Antifa. And he proposed that narrative throughout his protest activities. And indeed, in an effort to avoid any kind of gun control measure, he moved his march to the waterfront and also refused to go into a gun-free zone on the waterfront that the police had set up. Mr. Gibson did not face any consequences in that instance, nor did anybody who rallied with him face any additional scrutiny because they wouldn't go into the gun-free zone. And of course, as the few on the council would be aware of, Portland police found people associated with Patriot Prayer on top of a parking structure with long guns, and the police allowed them to pack up and go without any other kind of scrutiny that certainly, I think, a left-leaning group would have faced. So what does that mean to Mr. Cantu? Mr. Cantu, like many people of conscience in Portland, wanted to show up and counter-demonstrate against these groups. He arrived around the Southwest Nato Parkway area by the Morrison Bridge. You can see here how the police are lined up to face one side of that street. It's not lost to people who go to these protests, that they frequently only face them. And also, Mr. Cantu brought a helmet because of, again, Mr. Gibson's claims that everybody should show up armed and because of past experience with seeing the Portland police use excessive force on counter-demonstrators. This is that helmet, and you can see where this story will be going. So Mr. Gibson, in an effort, again, to show that he is impunit, can act with impunity, ignores orders to disperse or to go into the gun-controlled zone and moves down the Parkway down to about Southwest Salmon or Southwest Columbia, excuse me, in Nido. You can see the direction where they moved. And folks who are counter-demonstrating also moved to face them. And this is the area where Mr. Cantu arrived. Other people were there before. He was already facing, again, a line of police as well as the far-right demonstrators on the other end of the street. You can also note here the tree line and the growth where it's not much. And this looks significantly similar to how it did in August. You can note how little cover there is, little air height cover there is. So aerial distraction devices, these are high-velocity projectiles that can move at their highest caliber, 200 miles per hour. Mr. Cantu's helmet, like most bicycle helmets, are really only meant to withstand impacts of 15 to 20 miles per hour. So unfortunately, it was not going to be helpful in this scenario. Most importantly, PBB is trained to not shoot at people's heads. I believe Mr. Yamachika also highlighted that. There are training slides that I can't show you because of confidentiality in this case, but there is public documentation of that being a factor. They are trained to fire far above people's heads in a manner that's not supposed to strike people, again, given the velocity of these impact munitions. So here's a video of one side of the street showing PBB plotting their eventual volley of aerial distraction devices. You can note that there are warnings to the crowd and nor is there any sign that the crowd is antagonizing the police or the far-right demonstrators. I'll also note that the police or the far-right demonstrators are chanting, quote, "Fuck them up" and also "lock her up", which they should get a new slogan. Was also documented, this time from the other side of the intersection. And again, you can see people are not throwing projectiles at the police at this juncture. They're not throwing projectiles at the far-right demonstrators, but this is the force that they are met with. Police are loading some rounds. Cops are loading some rounds into some West Sleepy weapons over there. Police are firing tons of flashbangs into the crowd. They've only attacked the anti-racist protests. They haven't attacked the anti-immigrant group. So the police attacked the group through a bunch of flashbangs. Seemed like the group mostly held their line and has retreated. There's some projectiles getting thrown at the police now. So the Proud Boys and all the white supremacists are on the other side of the street cheering the police as they're marching in attacking the anti-racists. So one can see, again, that projectiles were thrown, but only after getting shot at unprovoked and without warning. And also, as noted, the police aimed clearly at the headline of people who were in the crowd, again, contrary to training. And unsurprisingly, people in the crowd were hit, particularly Mr. Cantu. This is him moments after being hit, struck in the head. He was moved to a bus stop close by to be treated, but had to continuously be evacuated because of the oncoming line of police officers. Very gratefully, a street medic was present and able to treat some of his wounds, but it was clear that he was going to need medical intervention and quick because he was bleeding out from his skull. And I apologize, just content warning for anybody who's watching or who doesn't want to view the next two slides. There are two graphic pictures of wounds, but these are important to describe the impact. This is at the hospital. Mr. Cantu was taken up to northeast Portland, and this is the nurse who removed the helmet, and this is the wound. You can see in the next slide that the projectile had lodged itself inside. You can still see some viscera and blood inside the helmet. That area is stained. And this is the size of the wound. It's several inches long in length, and that is a cracked skull. And as well, the next picture with the drainage tube. He had to wear that for several weeks. And it was uncomfortable. He had tinnitus, he had dizzy spells. He missed work, and it was generally a shocking, traumatic event. And it was meant to rave applause from the far-right, who used it in their training, in their promotional materials. At this time, Mr. Gibson was claiming he was running for Senate. It was a part of his campaign to show what was going on in Oregon. And as you can see here, as the police are advancing on the anti-fascist protesters, Patriot Prayer and those groups were singing songs. So following Mr. Cantu's filing a notice of tort claim notice, he was entered, or IPR, the Independent Police Review, attempted to interview Mr. Cantu. However, their questions, we interpreted as victim shaming. Their questions such as, what were you wearing? Who were you with? What were you doing? And other questions that were not about what the police did, what the interactions were. It was clear as day that Mr. Cantu was not anywhere in front of the line, nor that the police had fired directly at some particular individuals. They had fired into a crowd exactly. Now, despite the copious evidence that PBB had done this act, despite the mountains of video, and you can see that it's somewhat cited in this letter, they claimed, IPR claimed that, again, I note with the tone of victim shaming that Mr. Cantu was the reason why this case was not initially reviewed because he did not consent to a interview. And also, that IPR could not identify the officers. It's not a great mystery, nor with great difficulty to identify officers who are in a particular location. You can do so with a public records request. And this follows a pattern of unaccountability in the city that, again, has fostered distrust in our community and directly led to the events of 2020. So it's our hope that by settling this case, by you reviewing the facts associated in this case, that you and the public truly understand how long we've been dealing with these problems and how long we're going to continue to deal with these problems as we refuse to address them. So thank you for your time. I please urge you, again, to adopt the settlement agreement. And again, thank the City Attorney's Office for assisting us in bringing about the settlement.
Rob, does that complete your presentation on this item?
As I don't have any opening statement on my behalf of something. I don't have anything to add. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good, colleagues. Any questions? And Kealan, do we have any testimony on this item?
Yes, we have two people on the call.
All right, two minutes each. Please name for the record. Why don't we start with them?
First up, we have Dan Handelman.
Hello, good morning. Well, good afternoon, City Council. My name is Dan Handelman. You see him pronouncing that with the group Portland Cop Watch. I really appreciated that you've been having the attorneys present at these City Council hearings that involve large settlements for police violence, especially against protesters and people who've been killed by the police. In this case, you know, $125,000 doesn't seem a lot to repair the extensive damage that Mr. Cantu suffered, but that's between you and the lawyers and him. And, you know, I'm not objecting to you approving of this settlement. I just want to make that very clear. I thought it was very interesting. Mr. Chavez's presentation showed very clearly what we complained about to Chief Outlaw when she was still around, that the police deliberately turned their backs on a group of people they knew had guns with them in order to stare down the anti-fascist group who they then attacked before, as Mr. Chavez also pointed out, before they were doing anything to actively resist police other than not dispersing, which is not an act of resistance, it's an act of passive resistance, as the DOJ has pointed out in the cases that happened in 2020. And Mr. Chavez also brought up this IPR investigation where there was no wrongdoing found. That is just... That is just, you know, beyond comprehension that they couldn't track down which police officers were holding less lethal weapons or fired them that day and that nobody was held accountable. And we know there was no wrongdoing because it should have shown up in a police review board report. But there's only been two cases in those reports related to protest, and those were both from last year. And they initially were found with no misconduct, but the chief ended up overriding the police review board to find misconduct in those two cases. So there's a lot of issues around this, including that this is taxpayer money. I know it comes from a separate fund to settle lawsuits, but the money that comes in in the first place comes from taxpayers. And this is money that we could be spending on housing and other human needs instead of spending it to pay out for the wrongdoing that police do. I lost count. I'm going to go back and try to put it all together, but the number of payments in the last couple of years, just on the on the lawsuits against crowd control problems have been, you know, somewhere in the in the realm of half a million dollars already. And I'm sure there's more to come. So thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Regna Merritt.
Hi there. I understood that Agenda Item 850 is going to be polled. And so I defer my testimony to Commissioner Maps.
Regna, this is item 846. Did you want to testify on 846?
No, I did not sign up to testify on 846. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, just I had a question about the long-term health of Mr. Cantu. And it may not be a question that anybody can answer today, but the settlement seems very minor in compared to a a brain injury, so a traumatic brain injury. I'm just curious if his attorney could speak to that.
Certainly. So Mr. Cantu did suffer several months of tinnitus, as well as symptoms of a severe concussion. Now, a traumatic brain injury does require other kind of diagnostic tools to be used. It's clear that he had at least a skull fracture that, you know, in a third of cases could kill you. We're blessed that he is still alive, certainly. But he mended over a couple of months, and I'd say that he's in better physical health. But truly, the the post-traumatic stress of this is what strikes him most at this time. And as as do many protesters, I mean, I have not been struck by an ADD, but I know that's now. And I know my blood pressure goes up. I know I feel the cold sweats. I can only imagine what Mr. Cantu feels.
My last question, Mr. Chavez, is whether or not the CI, I'm sorry, the OIR group has reached out to have a conversation with you. They are doing a study in Portland Police Bureau around how embedded white supremacist activity is. If they have not reached out to you, I would very much like to make sure that they have an opportunity to talk to you and your clients and maybe some other folks that you could direct them to. I want to make sure that when the city council is presented with that report that is as thorough as it could possibly be. So if you haven't had that conversation, I'm certainly going to reach out and see how we can make sure you do that.
Yes, I would love to speak to them. I have spoken to them in the past about, in fact, this Cantu matter, but I would be happy to speak to them about this particular issue.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here today. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Kealan, please call the roll. It's an emergency ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, colleagues, I believe it's important that this council acknowledged the depth of the harm that was done to Mr. Cantu. And I also believe that it is important that Portlanders know that the crowd control device that caused Mr. Cantu's injuries have been banned in the Portland Police Department as of today. The city has learned from this incident, and we will continue to learn from how the protests of 2020 were handled as we continue to investigate those. For those reasons, I vote aye.
Rubio.
I'm really sad and disheartened that this happened. And my heart goes out to Mr. Cantu for the injuries he suffered in 2018. And I'm also grateful that he's in better physical health now. So I'm sorry to him that this happened. This also underscores the importance of the work that we're doing now and also what remains before us as public servants to get it right on on the work of public safety. There's significant work that the city must do and is beginning to do to be accountable and reconcile with these kinds of impacts on community during these times of protests and every day and to plan for future safer and equitable protocols and training. So we're learning from this. And we also want to move in the direction of building and rebuilding trust with community. So our job as a city council is to do everything we can to ensure that we have these plans and tools and oversight to keep the city moving in that direction. So just finishing up, I appreciate OJRC, Mr. Cantu, the federal magistrate, and the City Attorney's Office for coming to a settlement agreement on this matter. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, Mayor Wheeler, thank you for bringing this ordinance forward. I appreciate the presentation and also appreciate the testimony from you, Dan Handelman. This is very sad. My thoughts are with Mr. Cantu. This is taking a step, a right step in the right direction to build much-needed trust. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Thank you, City Attorneys and Mr. Chavez for getting to an agreement to this point where we can put this particular case to rest. But having said that, I found a video you showed very troubling and very problematic. And it's a video that I've seen myself over and over again. And I can't help but think that this is what happened prior to last year, where thousands of Portlanders took to the street nightly demanding a more just, more fair, and more equitable police force. I am proud of some of the pieces that we put in place that will actually start moving us towards that path. Clearly, what we saw in the video are not people who I think are there to protect and serve all of us equally. It clearly had picked a side and decided one side was right and one was wrong. I'm looking forward to working with the mayor and the rest of my colleagues and actually rebuilding a police force that the community can trust. And whether you're housed or unhoused, you see the police as someone who's coming as a problem solver and not someone that's there to either dictate behavior or or just remove people because they're economically devastated. I hate when these things come on the council agenda, but I think it gives us an opportunity to, a real reminder of how much work we still have left to do to have the kind of police force that we can be proud of. And quite frankly, to have one that somebody wants to work at. We don't have that today, but I see us on a path towards making that happen. And it won't happen until we get a civilian training deed, until we assess how we train officers today, until we do the truth and reconciliation. There is no shortcut to building trust and accountability. And I think today, this settlement actually tells us that we are on a path, but we're not close to actually having a police force that is accountable to the people that they're sworn to protect and serve. This takes us down that path, but we're nowhere near being there yet. I vote aye on this settlement today.
Wheeler.
First of all, I'm very grateful, Mr. Chavez, to hear that Mr. Cantu is doing well. That's that's good news. And I think all of us should be grateful that that has been the outcome for Mr. Cantu. And like all of you, I'm sorry that this happened. It should not have happened. And I also want to acknowledge that Chief Outlaw, immediately after this happened, banned the use of those types of devices for crowd control, which I think was the right decision to make. I also want to acknowledge that when these come to city council, it's because something has gone wrong. And sometimes it is through negligence. Sometimes it's intentional. Sometimes it's accidental. But at the end of the day, the important thing is that we have to get it right. Policing is extremely important, particularly in a city that values First Amendment rights, a city that is known for having a lot of demonstrations. Typically, before COVID, we'd have up to 200, sometimes more demonstrations per year. And the vast majority of them happen with without any police presence whatsoever. I still do support our police. I want you to know that. I still believe they need the tools, the resources, the training, and the personnel to be able to do their jobs effectively. And the role that we have them in is a very difficult role, to say the least. When I watch those videos, I can see some things going well. I can see some things not going well, obviously. But one thing that I always circle back to is I'm grateful that that's not my job. We, as a council, can provide the tools, the resources, the training, and the personnel that our police bureau needs to be successful, while at the same time acknowledging that we don't always get it right and that accountability and transparency do matter. And that when we get it wrong, the burden is on us to fix it. And whether that's training, whether it's different tools, whether it's increased accountability mechanisms, whatever it is, that's on us. And when these items come to city council, it's my hope that we all take this opportunity, both to acknowledge the importance of the work that our police bureau does and acknowledge the importance of building trust and serving the community well. And I want to thank everyone who worked on this settlement, from Mr. Cantu and his lawyer to our city's great legal team. A settlement is the right and amicable way for this to be dealt with, and I'm grateful for that. And I'm happy to vote aye. The ordinance is passed and the settlement is agreed to. Thank you. We are. And number 847, please. This is a non-emergency ordinance.
Accept an appropriate grant in the amount of $9,351 and authorize intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the 2022 Motor Carrier Safety Assistance Plan for commercial motor vehicle inspections by police bureau sworn personnel.
Thank you. And just due to the the time, I'm going to ask people to be to be thorough, but also not be long. So this is the Motor Carrier Safety Assistance Plan, sometimes called MCSAP. It's a federal grant program that provides financial assistance to states to reduce the number and severity of crashes as well as hazardous materials, materials incidents involving commercial motor vehicles. The grant program allows certified inspectors to conduct traffic stops on unsafe driving behaviors of commercial vehicles within the city of Portland. These stops increase safety and they reduce the number of injury crashes. The amount of the grant is a maximum of $9,300, sorry, I wish, $9,351.10 in federal grant funds for the 2021-22 fiscal year and requires a 14.99% match. That's about 1,648. This is a grant program that the city's participated in for many years since 2012. And we have Sergeant Ty Engstrom here today to present on this item. Welcome, Sergeant.
We have an audio problem.
Ty, are you able to? We can't hear you. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Let me ask colleagues, does anybody have any questions on this item? I'm not seeing any, Sergeant. If you can hear me, I think what we'll do is we'll ask for public testimony. Is there any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you. Next item, 848, please.
Authorize the Bureau of Environmental Services to acquire certain temporary property rights necessary for construction of the Stark Trunk Relief Structure Project Number E11009 through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Colleagues, remember, we've already heard a first reading on this presentation as well as an opportunity for public testimony. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right, the ordinance is adopted. Item 849, also a second reading. Any further discussion?
Oh, Mayor, would you like me to read the title?
Yeah, sorry. I guess I I'm jumping again there. Please do.
Thank you. Authorize the Director of the Bureau of Environmental Services to increase funding by $1,500,000 and extend the funding period for the Portland Harbor Public Involvement Program to facilitate public involvement.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
I just want to take a moment to appreciate staff at the Bureau of Environmental Services. The public involvement is really critical to the work that's being done around the river cleanup and and our response to it. I just want to put on the record that I think it's important that we have very specific outcomes and that we are actually engaging those communities that will be most impacted by the Columbia River Cleanup Process. And I want to hold the bureau accountable to what they say they want to do, which is to create pathways for employment opportunities so that Black and Brown people will enjoy that opportunity when the cleanup process starts. It may not be completed in my lifetime, but if we are on path to ensure that people of color will benefit significantly from the cleanup, I am on board. So happy to vote yes, but we'll be keeping an eye on the outcomes that we hope to achieve with this project.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, 850, please.
Accept report to present draft administrative rules to implement new bull run protections for council review prior to adoption by Water Bureau Administrator.
Commissioner Maps.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pull this one back to my office.
Without objection. Item 851, please.
Authorize bid solicitation and contracting with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the procurement of National Sanitation Foundation 60 certified sodium carbonate for drinking water treatment and an estimated cost of $8,500,000.
This is the second reading. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
And I hope that in the time of the five years that this contract is in place, that we're able to find more local subcontractor opportunities for this. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye, the ordinance is adopted. Item 852, please.
Authorize the Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to execute the Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Fund Heat Response Equipment Purchasing Partner Grant for a total allocation not to exceed $11,495,820.
Commissioner Rubio, and again, we will end at 1:00 PM. And I want to remind folks, we have two items pulled off the consent agenda. Commissioner Rubio.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, the summer Portland, this summer, Portlanders experienced, this year was the hottest on record. And on top of this record-breaking heat wave, the pandemic made it nearly impossible for Portlanders to purchase and receive cooling units in a timely manner, if at all. The shortage in supply and logistical nightmare on deliveries meant that so many families and individuals did not receive adequate cooling throughout the heat wave. The city and county took measures in real time to provide as much support for our community, but we were all not prepared for what actually took place. Colleagues, the ordinance that you see today will allow the city to take proactive steps to supporting our community and staying prepared for next year. The PSF Committee has made a funding recommendation that will allow us to acquire nearly 15,000 portable cooling units. To give more information on this request, we have Sam Barasso from BPS.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio and 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 city council members. I'm glad to be here with you this afternoon. I know we are running late, so I'm going to keep things as concise as possible. I will share a presentation so you all can follow along. So give me one second while I get my screen up. Okay. So give me one second while I get my screen up. Okay. Thank you all. Should see my my presentation now. Thank you. All right. So just maybe before I just jump in, I want to know just this, 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 this summer was incredibly tragic events with extreme heat events. And I'm excited to bring this proposal to you all as it reflects a strong body of urgent work done by PSEF staff, particularly James Valdez on our team, as well as the PSEF Committee in response to these incredibly tragic heat events. This presentation will focus on the committee's recommendation to fund Diversifying Energy, a Portland-based nonprofit, to play the role of equipment purchasing partner in our special heat response program. And so we'll go ahead and start, but this first slide here is just to orient you all. It has been about what, eight, eight, eight months since we last were in front of you all, where we brought our inaugural funding recommendations to you all. Since then, we've we've grown. And so we're going to talk about the heat response program here today. But I want to make sure you know, in the context, we also have our primary RFP. This is our larger $60 million RFP, which just closed last night. And we were up troubleshooting those last minute applications that came in, and we'll bring those back to you all in the spring. And then we also have our mini-grants program, which is a quarterly grant offering for up to $5,000 for for organizations to do climate work. And so focus is going to be on this far left here, but I just wanted to contextualize the other things that that we're working on. So you have, you know what else is out there. And so this ordinance is to authorize our our director to fund diversifying energy in an amount not to exceed 11 million for the procurement of portable heat pump units. These are these units you see to the to the right of your screen. Some of them look like mini-fridges. They roll on caster wheels, and you can exhaust them to to a window where they can provide cooling and heating. And some of them will also be window units where those are going to be relevant. Overall, the goals of this program are to reduce heat-related risk to vulnerable populations by distributing and installing portable heat pump cooling units in households, particularly those that are vulnerable, those with seniors within our priority populations. They use our guiding principles in the design and deployment of this and have used those. And the ideal is to begin distribution, expectations, begin distribution this spring, May, June of 2022, with implementation taking place over five years. Certainly expecting to front load those, but but at least planning that it could take as long as five years and to get out those 15,000 units. As well as to promote energy-efficient installation and use as well as connection to other programs that lower energy bills and overall provide support that maintains this product life, supports efficient operation as well as usability. I just want to start with the outset that, you know, in the, our, our ideal is always our deep home energy retrofits, but we recognize those take time, and those are exactly what we are seeing and you are going to see this spring in our larger program offering. But recognizing the calamity that took place this summer, we know that we need to move quicker and get these sort of cooling devices, lifesaving devices into folks' homes. And so that is the intent of the program. I do want to acknowledge that a lot of them thinking around these portable units is that you often can get these into buildings, into apartments without necessarily landlords, your permission from your landlord, that these portable units can get in these households without necessarily, you know, having window units that need to hang out. And so there's a lot of consideration. I, I, I welcome those questions at the end, but I'll keep us moving along. As we designed this program, we had several stakeholder meetings with affordable housing providers, with our utility companies, with other technical experts such as Energy Trust of Oregon, Northwest Energy Efficiency Alliance, and several other groups in designing this, as well as community-based organizations. And we ultimately determined that there are two primary roles for the program. There's an equipment purchasing partner role, and that's because we're distributing a lot of these units at scale, and it makes sense to have a centralized procurement for these units and an organization that would manage the coordination and distribution in a centralized way, as well as tracking the information of those that receive these units and developing other information such as maintenance, warranty procedures, all of this, this other content that's focused on really bringing technical expertise to to that role. And then there's going to be multiple community distribution partners. These are the folks that take the units, once they come into the city, and actually get them into folks' homes. And so we expect to have many partners play the community distribution partner role, primarily affordable housing providers, as well as community-based organizations that will be distributing those. So there's sort of really two cohorts of organizations we expect to play a role as community distribution partners, for the housing providers, because they have their assets and their facilities managers that can get these into their units and and our community-based organizations that can serve those that fall outside of the affordable housing networks. And their roles are going to be to coordinate with our equipment purchasing partner to get the number of units and type of units they need, get them into folks' homes, install them. We're talking about oftentimes these units weigh anywhere from 50 to 70 pounds and are going to vulnerable folks' households. So get them up the stairs, install them, and then provide information about the use and collect base, basic information around the households that are getting these units. But the focus today is on the 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 left side, and that's the recommendation we have for you all. So we'll speak to that, and we will certainly be coming back to you all in January of of next year to to present you all proposals for our community distribution partners. The critical need, though, was to move forward today and really within this month on our equipment purchasing partner. And we'll speak a little bit about that. And so as we move forward, one of the driving elements to our timeline as we started having these conversations shortly after the extreme heat event has been what is it going to take to get this scale of units into the region? And a big driver of that was the fact that in order to get units in spring of 2022, particularly at this scale, that you're competing with all the major retailers, whether it's your Home Depots, your Lowe's, your, your major H-Box system distributors. That in, in order to do that, you do need to get your equipment orders in by Q4 of 2021. And this is the last month in which we can do that and have reasonable certainty around getting on the scale of 2, 3, 4,000 units this coming spring. And so we designed this particular RFP for the equipment purchasing partner with that in mind. We released this RFP after working with the committee over several meetings and designing the program and working through that. We, we released the RFP on October 13th for two weeks, closed on October 27th. And then we had two review, uh, uh, two review panel meetings and several conversations in between in order for our scoring, our, our scoring panel to make recommendations to the committee. The PSEF Committee deliberated on those recommendations on November 10th, made the recommendation that you see before you hear today to fund diversifying energy. And and now we're coming here with you all with that same recommendation. We ultimately did receive two applications for the role. So that's the the broader context, received two applications, one from Diversifying Energy, a Portland-based nonprofit, as well as one from Earth Advantage, also a Portland-based nonprofit. And so I can, I'm going to move a little bit in the next slide to diversifying energy. But the, the gist is after you all, if you all take your action today or make a decision today, the expectation would be that we're going to turn around immediately, go ahead and move forward on, on, on procuring some of that equipment and placing those orders. And then come January of 2022, we will return to you all in order to, for you all to approve our community distribution partners and begin to work together to, to, to align our community distribution partners with our equipment purchasing partners and 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 develop a plan for rolling these units out in the spring of 2022. With that, Diversifying Energy is the organization we're recommending to, for you all to fund. They will be playing the role of key logistics, procurement, warehousing, and database roles with, with a few partner organizations that they're subcontracting to. As, as, along with their organization, as well as their partner organizations, they will have about eight staff members with a total of about 5.2 FTE working on the program over the course of five years. They're going to be managing the procurement and logistics with purchases from a handful of manufacturers and bring expertise in those, um, uh, those equipment procurement relationships as well as those particular vendor relationships. They, as part of this project and program, they are, they do have a warehouse in North Portland that they will be using for the equipment, you know, holding all the equipment, as well as just the pickup and drop-off for our community distribution partners. They will be the ones that will be contracting with our community distribution partners and managing the inventory and reimbursing ultimately our community distribution partners as, as they get the units out and reimbursing them for their efforts. And so that's why we will be coming back to you for that portion of the work. All of Diversifying Energy's staff are BIPOC, their current staff, and 50% of the subcontracted funds are going to COVID-certified firms. Specifically, it's, it's a majority going to a Black-owned firm, as well as another portion going to a woman-owned firm that's supporting this, this effort. Of the $11 million requests for funds, about 4.5 million is associated directly with Diversifying Energy's warehousing, procurement, technical services, coordination with community distribution partners, management of the, the database to collect the information on who is getting these units, as well as just the, the development of the warranty replacement procedures. Seven million is associated with the actual equipment, purchasing the actual equipment. And so that brings us to that total budget of 11.5 million. And so I've moved quickly because I really want to make sure you have an opportunity to ask questions. But the ordinance here before you is to authorize our director to execute a grant agreement with Diversifying Energy for the role of equipment purchasing partner, not to exceed 11.5 million. As I noted, we will come back to you all in January 2021 with an ordinance to approve our community distribution partners. And and so they will be funded for the installation and getting in the folks' home and doing that work. And then we will come back to you all in April 2021 with our larger grant offering and our, our awards. And that'll be, that, that's the $60 million RFP that closed yesterday evening. So those are the two actions I do have. Because we are on the regular agenda, I'm, I'm looking to see if my PSEF committee co-chairs are here. We do have both of them here, fortunately. This came upon us quickly. So I'm going to go ahead. I'd love to turn it briefly to our co-chair Maria Sipin to share a few comments, and then we'll turn it to Michael Eden, who are their co-chair. And then welcome, welcome any questions for you all. Maria, go for it.
Great, thank you. Mayor Commissioners, my name's Maria Sipin, co-chair for the PSEF Committee. Thank you, Sam and PSEF staff, for your work and support to get us here. Commissioners, as you know, climate impacts fall worst on our most vulnerable communities. And this summer's extreme heat showed us that the most tragic of its consequences impacted them directly, and it just all became even more real. PSEF projects have primarily focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions and looked at climate preparation and adaptation as positive elements to add on to projects. And we're seeing a need to start more actively thinking, to start more actively thinking about climate adaptation and resilience, particularly for vulnerable Portlanders. This heat response program is something we're proud of, and it's the first step in doing so. And I'm proud of my colleagues, too, on the PSEF Committee for asking the tough questions and finding the solutions to bring all of this to life. We know that this doesn't solve everything. We know that there's still going to be unmet needs and additional systemic approaches required. But distributing these efficient portable heat pumps and cooling units is an important step in bringing relief to households in extreme heat and potentially saving lives. We urge the council and other relevant government bodies to continue the efforts that began this summer to be better prepared for extreme heat and other climate change hazards. So thank you so much to Commissioner Rubio and her office for supporting this process through and through and for the council for considering this proposal today. Michael or Sam, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Maria. Michael, go for it.
Hi, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. It's nice to be here today. Thanks for inviting us to speak. I would also like to extend our thanks to the PSEF staff that worked so hard on this and the rest of the PSEF Committee for all the work they put into this. I just want to speak briefly about our recommendate diversify energy for the role of the equipment purchasing partner. As Maria noted, we've developed this program with a real sense of urgency. This moved very quickly from this summer in order to get ahead of these future extreme heat events. We know that they're going to be coming. We know that climate change is real and that we need to have a fast response to it now. Extreme heat response is something that we've not had to consider in the past in this region. And fortunately, we have technical partners in the region that have experience and understanding how we can efficiently keep our homes cool. So we're excited to receive strong proposals for the equipment purchasing partner role from Diversifying Energy and Earth Advantage. Both applicants were qualified and submitted strong proposals that addressed the needs of the equipment purchasing partner role. And it was a really tough decision. We really deliberated this. The PSEF staff really went through, scored both of the, both of the proposals. And in the end, we leaned on our consensus process to recommend diversifying energy. We believe that Diversifying Energy has pulled together a strong team of people and organizations with deep expertise, and they'll be well-positioned to implement this program successfully while growing their capacity to play other critical roles in the future as we mitigate and adapt to climate change. This really is, it's a, it, it really is a climate emergency at this point. And, and so we are doing our best to try to do our part to, to address it. Thank you for your time.
Right. With, with that, I, I think that, 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 that brings us to the end of at least our presentation here. And, and so I turn it back to Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you to our co-chairs. Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up for this one.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions of Sam or our co-chairs before we call the roll? Commissioner Maps.
Yes, first, I want to applaud Commissioner Rubio for bringing this innovative package forward. Climate change is real, and we need to take prompt action. This is also an innovative project unlike any I have seen in Portland. And for that reason, I think it's really important that council in particular pay close attention to this. If Commissioner Rubio were open to this friendly suggestion, I, I would love to see, for council to receive a quarterly update on how the rollout of this project is going. And if we were able to do that, I would be happy to vote yes on this.
I think that's a great idea. Sam, I think you'd be open to that as well. We can talk about the.
Got that.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Perfect, very good. So this is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Maps.
Again, I want to thank Commissioner Rubio for bringing this important item forward. I believe that this project will save lives, and for that reason, I vote aye.
Rubio.
Thank you so much to Sam, Maria, and Michael for your presentation today. And I also want to appreciate that the PSEF committee, staff, and so many engaged stakeholders came together very quickly to create this program to address extreme heat caused by climate change, which is no longer a distant possibility, but it's a reality today. Climate change is clearly here with us now, and it's critical that we plan for the increasing impacts of this change, which fall first and hardest on our vulnerable seniors, houseless communities, low-income, and Black and Brown households. And this, this program is just a stopgap measure, however. So it's important to note that we aim to quickly get potentially lifesaving devices out to as many vulnerable households as we can, while also setting up opportunities for more comprehensive energy retrofits to vulnerable households. So longer term, I hope to see more PSEF investments that go deeper to improve people's homes for better climate equity and health outcomes. The Diversifying Energy and Earth Advantage, or two Diversifying Energy and Earth Advantage, the two applicants for this work, thank you so much for, for being willing to step into this critical role quickly. And a heartfelt congratulations to Diversifying Energy for your successful proposal. And just to remind you that this is the first part of the heat response program, and we're now ready to move forward onto the community distribution partner RFP. So thanks again to everyone involved in ensuring this was a success, and I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for leading this charge to ensure that Portlanders have efficient, affordable heating and cooling systems in their homes as we plan for resiliency in the future of, well, climate change, which is here. Thank you, Sam, Maria, and Michael for the compelling presentation. I was especially taken with your inclusion of the community distribution partners and for giving us a brief glimpse of the next few months. In fact, congrats on meeting your deadlines yesterday. Last summer, more than 60 lives were lost in Oakland County due to the extreme weather conditions. Good government tracks mistakes, learns from them, and moves forward with a plan to ensure when the same event happens, which it will, we will have much better results. In this case, not lose 60 lives. It is clear that this funding is needed, and I commend Commissioner Rubio and the Bureau for bringing this to council today. I vote aye.
Artistic.
I want to also thank Commissioner Rubio for bringing item eight five two forward. I also want to really appreciate BPS and, and the Portland Clean Energy Fund for putting this package together. A special shout out to Sam Barasso, who, his dedication to making sure we do this right is really second to none. And I want to. And I want to appreciate Director Durbin uh for really uh listening to some of the early concerns uh as we were developing this process. Last year's historic heat wave was unprecedented, but unfortunately um it can be expected that it will not be the last time that our city experiences such deadly weather. As the impact of climate change worsens, we can expect more and more extreme heat events in the future. I am thankful for the thoughtful and quick work that has garnered to develop in a heat response plan. This work is really critically important and will save lives during the next extreme heat event. Excuse me, but I also want to be clear that this is not the end of the work. We cannot hope to provide enough cooling units to meet the need. Also, we need to ensure that we have resources available moving forward to help lower-income households cover the increased utility costs that may come with uh the assistance uh with the need to run an air conditioning. Additionally, we need to redouble our efforts on increasing opportunities to improve insulation in older buildings, increase tree canopy in lower-income neighborhoods, and grow our partnership with community groups to help coordinate relief efforts during extreme weather events. I look forward to seeing the plans for executing on these needs, not just from BPS and the Portland Clean Energy Fund, but from all corners of the city. I'm happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank Commissioner Rubio and her staff for bringing this forward. I think it's excellent work, and I want to thank Sam and his uh team, as well as the two co-chairs for being here today. This looks great, and it's a direct response to what we saw happen this last summer, and I'm grateful to all of you for your work. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item off of the consent agenda is item eight three eight, please.
Pay settlement of Daja Beck bodily injury claim for the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars involving the Portland Police Bureau.
I don't know if we have anyone present who can present on this item. Oh, Caroline, are you one? Yeah, there she is. Uh who pulled this item?
Uh a member of the public, Mark Porras.
Okay, uh would would they like to testify first, or should we have the presentation first?
They are on the call.
Don't we, why don't we hear their testimony? Uh two minutes, please, name for the record.
Go ahead, Mark.
Hi, for the record, my name is Mark Porras. Um I use he/him pronouns, and I live in northeast Portland. Um I'd like to start by thanking council for your work a couple weeks ago when you moved to allow public testimony on reports. Um after hearing from some devoted community members, that was a big win for public participation, and it's greatly appreciated. And when the mayor one-upped Commissioner Hardesty by saying that it's going to be all or nothing, we'll hear testimony on all reports, not just those of of uh great public interest, I have to say, and that surprised me, and I thank you for that, Mayor Wheeler. Uh the item at hand now, this item eight thirty-eight was on the consent agenda before I asked to have it pulled. And I asked because on a day when we've already shelled out a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for some egregious abuse of force by the, by the Portland Police Bureau, this is a mysterious twenty-five thousand dollar settlement for something else that PBB did, and it's just going to slip under the radar. I understand that settlements of five thousand dollars and up regardless of the responsible bureau require council to vote on them. Uh when items are on the consent agenda, it's it's like they're in the junk drawer. Nobody even reads the titles aloud for the public to hear. There's no discussion. There's no public input. Uh so I'm asking you today to to take these settlements out of the junk drawer. You you already have the five thousand dollar litmus test. Those are the small settlements that can stay in the junk drawer for now. So please do with the five thousand dollars and up settlements exactly what you did with the reports. Put them on the regular agenda by default. Allow public testimony and vote on them. That's what community input looks like to me. Uh so finally, for all of you, and in particular, the police commissioner, and I I'm interested in in understanding what happened on this particular item, eight thirty-eight. Why are we cutting a twenty-five thousand dollar check for something else that PBB did? Thanks.
Thank you, Mark, and uh Carolyn, why don't you give us just the the quick overview on this?
Thank you. Yes, this uh case arises from a protest on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty in North Portland near the intersection of Lombard and Denver. Ms. Beck was participating in the protest, and um she was on a motor scooter, and she was um not dispersing when orders to disperse were made, and so she was arrested. In the process of the arrest, she was pushed over, and she um suffered an injury to her left thumb that required surgery. So she incurred medical bills as a result of that. Uh Ms. Beck retained an attorney and wanted to mediate the case before she filed a lawsuit. So her attorney, um she and her attorney and myself and Karen Bond participated in a mediation with retired Judge Pamela Abernathy and agreed upon the settlement amount that we're discussing today.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The colleagues, any further questions? And Kealan, we just had the one individual sign up for public testimony. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Um it's important for us to continue to acknowledge and recognize the impacts um that that these uh that this has had um towards the community. Um and as we discussed earlier today, there's still more that we're um digesting, reflecting, and improving upon. Um and I appreciate that the situation has been resolved through mediation, and I appreciate that the judge allowed both parties to find a resolution outside of litigation, and our office is eager to with council making changes that will allow our community to heal and government to learn and grow. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yeah, I'm glad this was pulled off consent, um and I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Caroline, thank you for your efforts on this, and thank you for reaching a uh amicable resolution outside of court. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. The settlement is free to. Colleagues, do you mind if we do the last item? Very good. It's it'll just take us, I I don't think too long. Eight forty-five was, I believe, the last item that was pulled off consent.
Authorized contract with Oregon Department of Transportation for northeast Sandy and northeast one hundred eighth Avenue rectangular rapid flashing beacon in amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I was the person.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maps. I should not assume, Commissioner.
Well, uh um um I pulled this item off of consent uh mostly because I wanted to praise it. Um and I wanted to thank Commissioner Hardesty for bringing this item forward. Um I happen to be familiar with the this project in particular and the history of this project. It's a, this crosswalk is very important to the um to the residents of the Park Rose neighborhood, will essentially allow them to cross uh Sandy Boulevard to more easily access uh grocery outlet and other stores on the o- opposite side of the street. I've seen that neighborhood uh lobby for this for at least six years. It's probably much longer than that. I believe there might be a Park Rose resident or two um on the call who would just like to speak to it also. And with that, I'll hand it back to the mayor or Commissioner Hardesty. Um and uh we might have some public testimony.
Very good. Our Kealan, is there any public testimony on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have two people signed up.
Two minutes each, name for the record, please.
First up, we have Sally Tackle.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. I would like to thank the council for giving me this opportunity today to share my support for uh ODOT's funding request to install a crosswalk at northeast Sandy Boulevard in hundred and eights in front of a grass, a grocery store um that provides essential food to East Portlanders. My name is Saill Tackley, and I am the Executive Director of Historic Park Roads. We are a neighborhood prosperity initiative serving the Park Roads district. My agency is committed to uh increasing social equity, economic opportunity, and safety in Park Roads. Some of the services we provide include a small business technical assistance, workforce navigation, uh rent assistance, and also other direct services to our community impacted by uh the co- the COVID pandemic. The greater Park Roads neighborhood is a diverse part of Portland, um with a high population of communities of color. There are many community assets in Park Roads, including a thriving school district, and local organizations and businesses. One of the major community concerns in the area is unsafe conditions on Sandy Boulevard. There is limited crosswalk and lengthy spacing between marked signalized and enhanced crossings on Sandy. Sandy Boulevard also has been identified as one of the ferry streets in the city with the highest number of crashes and accounts for more than half of the city's traffic test. Sandy is also a pedestrian district, and according to Ped- PediX, um it's recommended that a crossing frequency of eight hundred feet or less should be installed. But between northeast hundred twelfth Avenue and northeast hundred twenty-first place in our district, there is significant crossing gaps, approximately two thousand two hundred ninety. That's almost three times the recommended amount. This project gives an opportunity for equitable economic recovery by supporting disadvantaged businesses in communities. It also provides residents with safe access to grocery stores and other businesses. Lastly, we have advocated for crosswalk at this location for years, as Commissioner Mingus mentioned. The community has suffered many losses due to multiple traffic um incidents and economic distress, and we know that the crosswalk will help the community get closer to a safer and more active neighborhood. Moreover, with the support of uh the Portland Bureau of Planning and Services, BPS, and ODOT, Historic Park Roads is working to create the Park Roads Community Plan with underserved groups to address our community concerns. We are doing our part to bring economic prosperity to the area, to activate the district.
Thank you. I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're you're a minute over. Thank you. Uh we appreciate your testimony, and uh Kealan, there was one under other individual. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have Annette Stanhope.
Oh, welcome, Annette.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh good afternoon, Commissioners. Um I will keep this brief. Uh it sounds like Saill covered a lot of the particulars with her testimony. Um I'm here today as the Chair of the Park Roads Neighborhood Association, and we have been working closely with Historic Park Roads over several years regarding this crosswalk, um starting back when Commissioner Maps was ED at Historic Park Roads. Um to add to some of the particulars that she mentioned earlier, um I spoke to ODOT earlier this year, and their pre-COVID numbers were saying that there was about twenty thousand vehicles that pass through the district daily. Um the area where this crosswalk is going in at a hundred and eighth and Sandy is probably one of the busiest um parts of our neighborhood. Um it's a place for people, many, many people try to cross on foot. Many of them are low-income and BIPOC individuals coming from the apartments on Wygant on the south side of Sandy to go to the north side where Grocery Outlet and Dollar Tree and Park Roads Hardware are. Um I frequently see uh adults crossing with young children, or youth are running an errand or getting a quick snack. And I have also seen very many near misses when this is occurring. Um and ODOT did a study that confirmed that the amount of pedestrian traffic that happens in this area would indeed benefit from a crossing. So it would be helpful to have a flashing beacon crosswalk to bring visibility to this crossing, especially in the fall and winter months when there is less light. And helping with this project is a step in the right direction towards improving pedestrian safety, safety in the neighborhood. We still have a long ways to go. Many other crossings and sidewalks are nee- needed in Park Roads, but it will feel very good to check this off the list. I hope you will approve the spending of a hundred thousand dollars toward this flash- flashing beacon crossing project today. Thank you.
Thank you. Kealan, does that complete public testimony?
It does.
Very good. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Maps.
Um again, I want to thank Commissioner Hardesty for bringing this item forward. Um I also want to thank uh the invited speakers that we had to testify on this. Um I am very familiar with this project, and I can say even though it's both modest, uh um it has taken probably a decade for this neighborhood to be able to get this important infrastructure improvement in place. Um I have a pretty good sense of how it will change the neighborhood. Uh when we talk about wanting to have a complete neighborhood, a walkable neighborhood, being able to cross Sandy Boulevard right there so you can access uh um the Dollar Tree and Grocery Outlet will actually have a huge impact on the livability of this neighborhood. So that is one of the many reasons why I am happy to vote aye on this item.
Rubio.
Uh thank you, Commissioner Hardesty and PBOP for bringing this item to council. It's a great um project um and a positive one, and happy for the residents of Park Roads. Um and glad to see that we're addressing this critical community priority. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, so thank you for pulling this off consent, Commissioner Maps. The schools community has actually complained about this uh dangerous area for pedestrians for a long time. So it's long overdue for the good people of Park Roads. Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty and PBOP for your leadership. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Uh I thank you very much uh for the president uh for pulling it off the calendar. We should celebrate the things that we're doing more often. Um and um I will say that again, this is a road that the city of Portland doesn't own. Um and we are partnering with ODOT uh to make these safety improvements, to make it safer for people using all modes of transportation to be able to move around Park Roads. Um yesterday, uh I was approached by many media outlets about the significant rise in traffic fatalities in the city of Portland and was able to respond to that. Um but the issue is, is that we have a lot of high-crash quarters in East Portland, and my uh my uh uh office and PBOP is committed to making sure that we can get these safety improvements that actually save lives uh done in a very uh efficient manner as quickly as possible. Um with the four billion dollar maintenance backlog that PBOP continues to enjoy, uh along with a fifty million dollar budget deficit, it has been challenging to find resources to make these improvements, but I look forward to working with my colleagues as we develop the next budget uh to prior, to continue to prioritize community safety and to see being able to move around our city streets safely uh uh as a high priority, as well as some of the other high priorities. Happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Uh this is obviously a terrific project, and I'm grateful for the partnership between PBOP and ODOT. Uh thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for your great work, and thank you all for working on this. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Colleagues, we are adjourned until two PM. Thank you.